This conference will now be recorded.
Shannon, call please.
Mayor Roberts.
Here.
Mr. Dandy.
Here.
Mr. Trillo.
Here.
Mr. Bo.
Here.
Mr. White. Here.
Go ahead and pray with this evening. Lord God, we just thank you for this day. Or God, we just thank you for all the blessings that you've given this community. Or God, I just pray that you would lead and guide this commission, give us the wisdom and the foresight to do the things that are up for this community. Or God, I just pray for each individual that is in this room this evening, or God, that they would do your will, that they would hold your name above all else. Or God, I just pray for each one of our citizens as they go through their daily lives and daily struggles, that you would put you first. And Lord God, as a city commission, I pray that we would do the same. Or God, I just pray that you would be with us this evening to make the right decisions, have enough foresight to make our community a better community for the citizens who live in it. Or God, I just pray for each individual commissioner and their daily tasks as commissioners and as businessmen. Or God, I pray for our first responders as we put them in harm's way in many, many different aspects of our lives. Or God, I just pray for protection over each one of them. Or God, I pray for the rest of our employees that are tasked to do many different things, typically short-handed and different things. But Lord God, give them the energy and the strength to complete those tasks at a timely mass. And Lord God, we just thank you again for this free contribution we do. Jesus Christ, amen, we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands one nation under the law, indivisible and infinite, and just as for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the state of the temple, a perfect gray chicken, a mama united.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the gin that's submitted.
Yeah, most second for the two last minutes we're in discussion are first.
Now, Shannon, call please. Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for consideration the minutes of June 11th, 2022.
Most seconds of the consideration of minutes in discussion. In addition to correction. Shannon.
Mr. Trillo.
Yes.
Mr. White. Yes. Mr. Bo.
Yes.
Mr. Dandy.
Yes. Yes. Bring this to our district staff board. Shannon, would you like to start?
We have John Hand here with FBI. He brings things. And I believe they were given a paper that shows all of our buildings and work that they did down.
Hello, John Hand from St. Love in Texas. I started looking at the roofs and putting together some pictures and reports and damage. And I didn't get that far, but I got far enough that I wanted to come and talk to you guys and answer any questions you might have and talk to you about the roofs you have and what condition they're in and what kind of problems you could expect. I know the deductible situation has changed the way that you guys are going to have to approach these. So I thought, and that's probably going to take some time. So I wanted, people were probably a little interested in or worried about the condition of the roofs and the ceilings hidden in and all that, how long it'll come here and that's going to happen. But there is pretty much damage on all the buildings, the ones that I saw anyway. I didn't make it to all of them, but I made a list here. We broke these buildings down by what kind of roofs that they have. We're going to talk to you a little bit about, for example, the metal roofs and what damage it looks like to metal, what kind of metal you get out. So you primarily have an exposed fastener metal roof system. So they're basically three book panels and they lap together on the ends. You square those panels up and put screws through the panels into the front or what your deck is. So on some of your roofs, what constitutes like actual functional damages when the lap seams have hits and the lap seams causing buckles or around the fasteners that cause the fasteners to buckle out? Now, you can have hits in the field too around your fasteners that cause a little bit of buckling too. And you've got to also remember that an exposed fastener metal system has the fasteners through rubber grommets. I didn't bring one to pass them out, but over time, that's what the sun wears out. It causes problems over time. But I didn't see any holes in the metal that would cause like a direct leak. But I did, on some buildings, saw some laps that were damaged and a lot of field hits. So, but you might expect to see like some little spotty leaking here and there. You might not see any leaking. But on some of them, you're probably going to have to, you're going to have to replace some metal and some you can probably coat. And some you can probably, you won't have to do anything with at all if you don't want to. I don't know when that happens when the adjuster turns in there works and they say, you know, you're told, you're told, you're told, and you're probably going to get forced to do something. I don't have any of that information right now. I mean, I'd like to come back and stay involved with this thing and kind of help you put together some budgets or some, figure out what you can do with the different types of roofs that you have. Just my opinion. I also left a card with the city manager and with the mayor for an engineer that I do a lot of work with. Their company, I'm pretty sure got schools here, so they're going to be over here anyway. But I just know that that process is going, it will take a lot of time. But as far as dealing with the metal, we patched some skylights that had some damage. And then there were some, you know, you have ends and you have seen damage. But I wouldn't worry about water coming through. I mean, it's not impossible, but I don't see any major, major leaks happening on the metal you have. So a coating, you can do some coatings, acrylic coating, silicone coating. Some of them are going to have to get replaced. But right now, I wouldn't be losing sleep over any of your metals. So this is your list of your metal roofs. That aquatic center is the only one that I saw that's not an exposed fastener system. It's a concealed fastener system. It's a snap lock. And so on the seams, it does have hits on the seams and the seams are buckled. But I mean, I don't expect the panels to fly off again. You know, I mean, it's possible that some of those seams might pop, but you know, I mean, I can handle some repairs. And I don't think anything is devastating again when it comes to the metal. The shingles, you know, the shingles, just about like every shingle roof in town you got hit with that hill, it's going to be smashed. If, most of the time, shingles are on good slopes, so you don't, you don't have to worry about, you know, even if there is damage through the fabric, you know, there's a felt paper under there that water's probably going to shed. You might get a leak or two on some of these, but there's really nothing you can do about that until you get the shingles replaced. The Troy Air Center, that one, that one's been having shingle problems for a long time. Some of those mancers, like the shingles have fallen off just over time with wind and weight. And I would not recommend putting the shingles back on that. When you get ready to roof it up, put some metal on or you can fasten, you know, and gravity's not going to fight that, you can flash as well. So that roof had some modified on it, coated with some silicone. And that's one of the only roofs that, a part of the roof that, only roofs that I looked at that didn't have any damage at all. So I can say that the silicone is a good viable option as far as a coating here on some roofs. I like the silicone. And I would encourage you on some of these metal roofs, instead of replacing the metal, that you can put silicone coating on. Because metal, in my opinion, is the best type of roof system you can put on. It's not for every roof, but the roofs it is for, it's the best type of roof.
Is there a, is there a possible color on it? Is it all one color? Is it different?
Well, it's primarily white. That's how you get your reflectivity, but you can mix some colors into it. I've not seen that done sometimes with success and not success because the pigments they put in there, you know, it just doesn't, it doesn't stay well. I mean, the kynar, whenever they coat the metal of the factory, it doesn't stay. It fades over time. So, I mean, the sun beats everything up. But as long as you protect the metal and you need to, you're going to have to address the seams and the fasteners. So the fasteners, like in our panel metal roof is a roof that's going to require maintenance anyway because those rubber grommets were, you know, when you put the panel down, you stick screws to perfectly good metal. I mean, you're going to eventually have a problem with it. And like I said, the coatings are good for that. You know, I think there's some viable options. It's not going to be an option for all of them, but it would be an option for some of them. And some of them, like I said, even if you're dented, I mean, the real problem is going to come with see if that adjuster totals everything. Because adjusters typically don't total anything unless they know they're not going to pay for it. And that might just going to be the situation, the problem that we have. And I'd try to find, if I was you guys, I'd try to find an attorney to figure out how to deal with that. But anyway, so there's some built up roofs and the modified roofs. So the modified that are on the three buildings that are downtown was laid well. I didn't find any fractures on those. I would have been concerned about them, but I didn't see any fractures in them other than where these two buildings are joined together. We used all the roof cement. We could kind of patch that up, but that wasn't really done correctly between those two buildings. So it probably needs a little more roof cement in there just to prevent it from leaking at all. But I didn't find any fractures there. And some of these roofs, when you go back to re-roof them, when you're looking at them, like there's some recover options where you can fleece over the modified or you can mop a coverboard and fleece back on it. Or, you know, you can do some things that preserves the value of the existing system that you have. And you're just adding to it with that $15 worth of roof system on it. So that's, that's kind of the thing when you're moving forward on this, is kind of putting budget numbers together to figure out where you're going to be and different types of systems on the different buildings you got. And just kind of look at each one and figure out what you want to do. One roof that does need dealt with is the theater building. So that's a really old and built up. And I did find fractures of it. Because a built up roof is a base ply with a mop and then an inter ply, mop, inter ply, mop, inter ply. So it's a thick roof that gets covered in gravel. But the best way to think about it is thinking like some brownies that come out of the oven. But then like how it ages is you turn the heat down and you put it back in the oven. You see what I'm saying? And over time, it's going to get, it's going to get brittle, right? So that roof is a really old one and it's over a wood structure. So I didn't core these buildups. I thought we'd get to that when we got with the consultant. We never got that far. But that building and the senior citizens building are the only two roofs that I think that probably need addressed and they need addressed within the next month. Be better if it happened before the next full cooling and heating cycle. So what's going to, what's going to affect these roofs and what's going to cause the damages that they have to accelerate, on these two specifically, is when, like if you get cold or a cold or a snow day or if you get six, five, six inches of snow up there and then it warms up to like 80, that's going to go from cold to hot, right? And if it happens again, it's from cold to hot. So it's going to experience like a thermal cycle, right? And it's going to cause these holes to open up. And so on that old building, especially with the wood on it, that's one that probably needs dealt with and it probably needs dealt with soon. And I would figure that back without, I would do something with the HVAC climate control system in there while you're doing roofs. It's got an old swamp or two swamp, old swamp, I can't remember what's up there. But that one needs addressed. Besides that, the police and fire had a TPO roof on it, just like the senior citizens roof had on it. But it had like a lightweight HD board above the ISO and between the membranes. So that roof performed better than the other one. But it still has the deep indentations in it, right? And if it has those deep indentations, I mean, it didn't have any, many in it like the senior center does. I mean, the senior center has deep ones all over. And so like I said, that one is likely to open up, especially when it's cold and it gets warm. And that one needs dealt with. But other than that, like the police and fire is good. The evidence room needs a new roof, but that's not really because of hail. It's just because it's an old EPM and it needs to come off. But that's my basic summary of your roofs that I have that I've looked at. So there's some of your other buildups you have. I found some soft spots, meaning there's going to be a fracture in that system somewhere in the plies. But there weren't any full fractures, right? So I found soft spots, which means there's a fracture in there somewhere, but not one you stick your finger. It's like the museum has them. And it's covered in gravel, so it's super hard to find unless you sweep it. But you know, looking for them and trying to do patchwork on it. I mean, it's just, it's a very difficult thing to do with buildups. I've been preparing buildup roofs for 20 years. You know, it's, they're a hard thing to do when they're covered in gravel. But just wanted you to know, nothing, nothing is in horrible, besides the theater building and the senior center. But the other buildings are really, you know, they'll be okay. They can last. If the engineering and all that stuff takes two years, then they'll most likely be fine. But those other two, I will put numbers to support the scope to, but I certainly will. Any questions?
Well, at this point, we are basically waiting on a report from the adjuster. If he, what he does or has, you know, because if he totals it, then because of our insurance, that would open us up to having to make and cancel our insurance. And so we will be forced to at least repair them where they are insurable. We're just going to be waiting on that. And then the other issues, fortunately, for one of the two main concerns, we are working on a situation that will occur of that. And then senior citizens building, I guess we're going to address that. Again, after we receive the report. I've been told it to be a couple of months or so.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's.
And you stated that yourself.
We're working on that consultant on a couple of different deals, so we know him. I mean, it's almost crazy to say, we almost wanted to not total the buildings, you know what I mean? Because once he totals, you're going to have to handle it, right? They're going to be totaled, you know? So you guys, I left some cards if you have any questions or you want to talk about. I mean, I'd be glad to do it. If you have any other buildings you want me to look at, I'd be glad to do that too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Shannon, you have anything?
I'm just that, for the budget, I need to get all of your signatures when you leave.
Grace?
Just Commissioner Mayor, we have been mainly focusing on the budget. We have a few other deadlines that we've met and that we're still working on. And eventually later in the day.
Dean?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Mr. City Manager. I would like to first start by addressing some of the directives given by the mayor at the last meeting. I know it's a special item, but I figure it'll touch on even with. In reference to the noise nuisance regarding lockdowns and racism on city streets, I instructed our officers to step up enforcement efforts. Obviously, this is a problem that will not be remedied overnight. But I think when the public starts to see that we're taking this issue more seriously, we will see a reduction in this kind of quality of life nuisance. There was a question on increased police presence. Nine of our 15 green car MDT computers were installed last week. One of the many benefits of having computers in patrol cars is that officers are able to spend more time out of the station and in the community and do their workflow in their vehicles. LCCA response time, we've had very few issues to report with LCCA dispatching our officers. Sometimes there are minor delays, but they are also in the process of training about 16 new dispatchers. And request to the mayor's response, excuse me, request for staff in report, I direct your attention to the slide. As you can see, we're still wrong with departments, but we're still understaffed. We're at about a 64% staffing rate currently. And a lot of departments are down officers. You can see that we have two uncertified officers who will be trained until such time as they can enter the police academy. And then the next slide is meant to illustrate current compensation offered by all Lee County law enforcement agencies. The important number to look at is the certified number. That's what we pay an officer after he's gone through the academy and has done our ITO process. So this is just to give you kind of a picture of where we stand in Lee County as compared to other agencies. And other things that make it hard to recruit, sometimes retain officers, is our parity level of medical benefits, the equipment, the training. And obviously, there's always competition from all over. So just to give you a kind of a snapshot of where we stand in relation to the other agencies. We will continue to work on the mayor's directives and offer the commission updates on our progress. My last topic for the commission, I can safely say, is the simple most important topic facing law enforcement today. And I think everyone in this room can agree should be our first priority. And that is the safety of our children in our schools. Math students used to be an annual occurrence, then they became a monthly event. Now it seems like they have become a weekly, if not a daily, event. I'll not criticize the response to the school shooting in Uvalde, Texas. But I'm sure it will be analyzed for years to come. And the lessons learned will be taught to a generation of law enforcement officers. As we learn from the Columbine massacre, math shootings and school shootings are not normally the situation. There's a SWAT team. It's time to convene and prepare and respond. These incidents require the first officer on the scene or the first officers who arrive at the scene to immediately neutralize the threat before anything else. Therefore, I'm informing you that we are taking the following steps to better prepare our active shooter response. First, we have not had department-wide active shooter training in seven years. I have arranged for the Lee County Sheriff's Office to give our department simunition, scenario-based active shooter training on Saturday during August or September. I've spoken with the school superintendent about this and she fully supports this. And she and her staff will observe and participate in the training, which will be conducted in one of our schools. This will also involve role players and fire and EMS personnel. It is my goal for our department to receive this training once a year at a minimum and preferably twice a year. One of the problems encountered in Uvalde was access. The Lovington Police Department is currently equipping a room which will contain active shooter response equipment, which will be able to, which we will be able to bring to the scene of an active shooting within a matter of minutes. And this will include door-reaching tools, shields, access cards and physical master keys to access every room of every school in the city, even during lockdown. These cards and keys will be safeguarded and only removed from the room during emergency. Every officer will have the floor plan to every school in the city with him and his unit at all times. One of the other lessons learned from Uvalde and Sandy Hook is that the shooter may be a teen or a young adult, but the target may be a lower elementary school. Thus, we have to be prepared to respond to all our schools, not just the high school. Finally, the school superintendent, the city manager and the police department must take a look at our school resource officer program. The current agreement drafted in 2014 calls for the schools to pay $41,000 a year towards one SRO. To be fair, it costs the city approximately $72,000 a year for a certified officer. So I took a look at the surrounding communities and I noted that the city of Hobbs has about 16 schools and has six full-time SROs. Tatum has three schools that are all close together. You can walk from one to the other. They have one SRO. Same with units, they have three schools all close together. Their city commission just authorized the second SRO position. Lovington, on the other hand, has nine schools scattered across the city and has one SRO position. I pray we never have to utilize the measures I have just mentioned. But I also want the commission to know we will do everything we can to be fully prepared if such an event does occur here. I'll stand for any questions.
Two, I just had one question, not in regards, and I appreciate that. When it comes to city fines and loud noises and as well as street racing and so forth, and what I mentioned to you before about maybe, I don't know if that would be your part or city manager part of the judge's part, increasing fines. I would say a $25 fine, anybody can find $25, they'll pay it. But if it's a $500 fine, they're going to have to ask mom and daddy to get that $500 and then it'll be in trouble. So I think, I think we need to look at our, because I know we haven't gone off of our fines and we just need to get them in the pocketbook that way they'll think about it before they do this.
The fine for a loud monster is only $74.
But I agree. I get with the judge, but that may be something that may have to be voted on by the commission and possibly go through the AOC.
Thanks.
I just want to commend you on being.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it very much. Uvalde only has about 2,000 or 3,000 more people than we have. So I don't think it was a big city.
Dean, I just want to say, one, that I hope everyone understands that the list and when it comes especially to staffing, is to keep it on our mind at all times that we are understaffed. And you are hiring, in each certification, as many as you can, to get us up to staff. But that also to let the community be able to see it on a regular basis that we are not able, it's not due to financial, it is simply due to the availability of officers. We're doing the best we can to do a little plot. We appreciate it. I believe I told you, if I didn't, I meant to, that when I put the noise ordinance on there and excessive speed, as soon as you put it out, the young lady reached out to me and said, it was quiet immediately. So in regards to the, all of the
Don't know if it'd be writing sheets that come in.
Right, you know, you have, there was a lot of.
It was noisy on Facebook.
Yes, there was, okay, that's a good way of putting it. And despite all of that, it was effective. And as many people wrote to say, what a waste of time this was, there was as many people that were happy that we are doing something about it. So we appreciate that. Also, I would like to mention, well, thank you for being proactive. We understand the concerns. And if we keep moving forward, then possibly we can increase our staffing in that particular area. Because you're right, kids are, it's important to protect our children. Anything present?
Okay, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner. So we've had our three new hires. Two of them started last week. One of them started on Monday and one started shipping on Wednesday. The week of August 15th, we're supposed to have the state forestry come down. They're going to do some wildlife training and they're going to do it with the whole fire department. So we're all up today. And then September 1st, our cadets from our academy that just got through, they're going to scroll over their lab burns and their tests. And then to cover the stuff you had. Our staffing right now, we have a total of 21 employees. Four of those are on date stat. So we have 17 personnel lost ship and two of which are only EMS. We do have one new hire that starts on the 3rd of August. So we will pull personnel to 1876 people per ship. As far as certifications, 14, including myself, out of the 18 are Fire 1, Fire 2 certified. The three that just went through academy, of course, when they test, that will bump that up to 17 personnel with Fire 1, Fire 2. As far as EMT license, we have two basics, including the EMS coordinator. The one basic just started his EMT intermediate on the 17th of this month. And then, including myself, we have 11 intermediate license, two paramedics. And then, starting in January, we have four that will be in basic class. So let's, I mean, all of our people are. So let's, I mean, all of our people are at least a, will be Fire 1, Fire 2 exceptions for the EMS only. And then we only have the four personnel and two of which, well, all of them are new hires, but the two newest hires that are not EMTs. And then, one of the questions was the EMS billing and collections process. So right now, the way it works is our crews, our EMTs, they take the run, they do the report in the NIMSTAR's reporting system. Those reports get QA'd and anything that's wrong with them goes back to the EMT, they get directed. The report gets marked as complete and then the EMS clerk takes it to the change healthcare. Change healthcare, the way they work is they bill the patient three times. And if they do not get any contact from the person, if they don't pay the bill or at least call and make any kind of schedule to make payments, what they were doing was they were just putting it in a file that was marked that day. And that was the end of it. So now, all those, every month will be exported to CRI, which is Credit Recovery. And they will be turned in, at that point, the collections will, they'll start taking care of that. It's the same thing with our H system. All the personnel records have been exported to CRI. They've got them all, they're starting to do that. They can only go back as far as 2018, five years. And right now, we're in the process, we have to save, it's, it's all in the computer, but we have to do a hard copy and then an itemized report for every single patient, we've got almost 1,700 patients that we're having to save that off. So we haven't got that completed yet, but after it is completed, the MATE system will be shut down and we'll be saving 7,200 a year. And then one of the other questions was,
The point we're going to that one, I just wanted, the reason that's on there is because in the audit, the auditor mentioned that we have basically accounts receivable out there and we need to come up with some sort of a reasonable number that that now represents, we can't write it off. We can just simply say it's an adjustment. And so as we proceed through this, basically you need to make sure that the financial director gets all of this and then we can update that and then say a reasonable account. So it wasn't questioning if you're doing it, it's so that we can proceed and take a portion of the budget, I mean, not the budget, but the audit part, and come with a result that we can, and split it as a number that we can live with.
And that, truthfully, like I said, until this, none of this was being done. This was stuff that I've been found, I've tried, you know, trying to get the steps to get it correct.
Absolutely, I appreciate it. Okay, sorry, I interrupted.
No, you're good. So the last, and everybody has this on there, was the burn, you know, about the fireworks, burn ban and all that. So the ban was technically, I guess you would say lifted on June 23rd due to the being 30 days out, well, at that point, we could not reenact it because we'd be enacting a new one, not extending the one that was already there. However, just in the three days around the 4th of July, the 3rd, 4th, and 5th, we did have eight fires that were started due to fireworks in city limits, it's all in city limits. And if you'll take a look at your pictures over here, you'll have a, this is behind the Avenue R apartments. And you can see the fuel load, I mean, you can see the house is that it was gonna burn up to. And there's different pictures, you can see along that wooden fence, I mean, that, those feet are good, three, four feet tall, taller. And then there's the last picture, it shows the Avenue R apartments in the six-foot fence and those tumbleweeds are piled almost as tall as the fence. So, you know, that's the reason, one of the reasons, of course, is in the burn ban, the fireworks ban. And matter of fact, on the 5th, the day after, we had a fire off the Roland Taylor in the alley of 1100 block. We actually got there fast enough, but it started catching a shed on fire and it did damage some of the outside, but we managed to get it out, we managed to get it before it got too far. And there again, that was all due to fireworks. So as of right now, I still have, even though the county has lifted their burn ban, I'll still not allow the burn permits out in the county in my area. I mean, like I said, that's in city limits and we see what it looks like, so you can't have a burn, a burn permit against city limits anyway, only out in the county, well, out in the county is worse than in the city. Therefore, I still have not looked at it.
And the response time is left, I mean, it's longer.
It is longer, yes. So I will stand for you, Commissioner.
Well, if we have another, let's say, next year's the same way, we need to make sure that this doesn't expire.
Correct.
Do you think my best?
Now that I know, it will not happen again.
And the thing is, I understand people are still gonna use firearms regardless, and we're still gonna have these issues. But I would hope that if we do run into this again last year, people use better judgment because there's families there in the houses, there's children in the houses. Doing stuff like that can really catastrophize. Yeah, I just wanted to make it a point that we won't let this happen again.
Hi, Jared.
If we are in a safe situation.
Yes, sir.
Miss Price?
Yes.
I just want you to know, you've got an unexpected gift, a few days of open, and I, I hope it was beneficial to you, not that,
Not that, I just had one question. What fireworks set on fire? Which one was it? Was it, was it artillery, was it smokeball?
Uh, we had some artillery, that started some. We had the little, like you're talking about, the little smokeball, I mean, we had the smokeball.
Pounds and smokeballs, well, I just, but that's what was allowed all the time. Artilleries, let's don't see it, but I didn't sell that many artillery, I sold 20, I thought so. But I didn't have, I sold a lot of pounds.
I was just gonna, so I have seen artillery, when it falls over, when it shoots, it looks like a river, a fire.
That's too big to use.
I, I agree, I agree, I appreciate it.
You can't say you gotta ban everything because, and we've never before, when we did shots, we never banned some of the bigger stuff, and you banned everything except pounds. And then that drop package didn't get renewed, or I didn't remember it. And get it fixed super. But that's my, I wanna know which fireworks that, right? Because if it was a pound, that's mine. Sorry, never banned, and they're the biggest grass canter I've ever seen. And I hate them. And people give them to their kids, it's a pound, they give them to their kids.
Right.
But that's on them.
All right, thank you. There you go. All right. Mr. Roll.
Again, I'll say what I always say. Shop local, laws in the deep, local. Help out the drinking water stores that we have here, because if we don't, you know, be going on the wayside, we don't want to see that happen. We gotta be here for the city. Helping out the people that are here, providing services to us. I appreciate all of you that are here sticking it out, trying to make a living. Appreciate it more, you know. Get the prayer coming up here. I hope that people can get out, enjoy themselves, have a good time. I see that, sort of a correction as far as how people try to protect the phone.
We're gonna talk, Jamie's gonna talk about that a little bit.
Okay, okay, as far as getting that out there to the public, are we any other way besides Facebook? We're gonna talk about that.
I can report on it if you want.
And also, I've seen, we have some signs over around the area. New signs that I've seen, both nice, were put up. City, historical Main Street, historical downtown improvement signs, you know, really nice. I'm good, thank you.
Yeah, I'd just like to thank you guys for letting us question you and poke at you and, and then you go above and beyond, you do extra things that newer people are thinking of and because, you know, we're all pretty much new right now, I'm thanking you for that. And not just saying, this is the way we go, and being okay and settled, thank you for that.
Ms. McGinn?
Yes, so Mayor and Commissioners, as mentioned, the PSA went out. I provided you guys a copy, but I was going to say that if anybody's interested in picking up one, I'll provide them the copy because there's a few maps on there. I know it's a little bit confusing on the closures, but if they follow the PSA, they'll know what is accessible. So right here, it says City Livingston, access route would be North Commercial, East Washington, and East Central. If you're coming in from Hobbs or Lee County South Route, Unit 10, you can hit NM18, the commercial, turn right on Avenue R, left into Industrial, to the Fairgrounds. Roosevelt Street off Avenue B, Curry Street off Avenue B, industrial street, Washington, the commercial as well. On Avenue B and Commercial, there'll be one lane traffic, which will only be southbound into the fair. So we're just asking that everybody follows these instructions given, they'll have their side, the traffic signs and everywhere out. I did put on Facebook or website, our Instagram, I sent an email out to Chamber, EDC, Main Street, County, and a couple of our departments to ask them to help distribute. I put a sign at our door and I'm hoping they could sign, or put some signs over their door as well, that way if people walking in, they can see it. Like I said, I can turn out copies, so everyone's pick one up, that way they're aware of it. It's too late to get it out in, like, a water bill right now, it just came out this week, but we're just trying to fish it out in those ways as much as we can. It's just asking all of our entities to share it, distribute it, we'll share it more than once. So it's about how we're trying to get it out. But anybody wants more copy, just let me know, I'll provide it. And that was it.
Any questions? Here we have, we have, sorry. These, oh, Junior, I know you're running.
I didn't know if the city had decor signs that could be put up. So I think that the county there is gonna attract a lot of people from out of town. So a lot of the people aren't gonna get the information that you just spoke about. I just don't know if the county or the city has signs that could be put up.
For structure, it would be, it would be up to NM18 Constructors' Inc. to get those out since it's their project, but,
And they are, yeah.
Okay, yeah. So we'll talk to them about it.
Flashing signs, stationery.
The county is gonna donate or going to use the signs that they have, especially on the bypass route. And Constructors' Inc., this is from a meeting two weeks ago that we were in, I was in present. And they are going to, they're limited on what they've got, they don't have what they have and they're full, so they don't have any additional room to add verbiage. So the county's going to donate or use theirs and we're going to obviously put up as many vehicles. They're gonna be very forthcoming and I thought Commissioner Jackson was gonna be here.
He could be at a meeting with,
Okay, I wasn't sure, but anyway, he, he is making sure that there will be as much signage as he can possibly accomplish because this is, he's saying this is a big deal. We attempted to try to get them to open it both lanes, but they just couldn't do it, there's so much that's right there in that intersection. So they were only able to get one lane. They made the decision to make it an exiting lane back to Hobbs rather than an entry lane. I think either way, it's gonna be difficult, but hopefully, we're gonna, there's another meeting tomorrow at 10 o'clock and the traffic light at Avenue B is gonna be in that discussion. We're going to try to see, get everything as operable as we can so that we can, because the traffic's gonna be really difficult. Or we're gonna really restrict our fair, so.
Friday is gonna be a biggie.
Yeah.
I understand.
And then with that plot out.
Well, that, yeah, I mean, that's the most attended day, so this Friday is the most attended day of the fair. In addition to, we've got, they're gonna do, I'm assuming they're gonna do their, their walk from Hobbs or wherever they start, I mean, where they start. They're gonna have to divert it around the same trap, same route that is shown on the, on the map. So it's gonna be difficult, starting Friday for the next 10 days. Please be leery of these, these points that will become congested and let's be respectful to the people that are visiting our city and their, yes, here.
And she sends out to all hotels and hotels in Hobbs, some people that's staying down there that'll be coming, will have a white no routes.
I was thinking to say, I'm sure they would be more than willing to put those and have it available.
Ian's gonna have a lot of the people.
We have to, absolutely, that's a good idea. Anyone? Is that the only thing you can do?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, see you, man. Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, last week I had the opportunity to meet with Ms. McHager and the supervisor for Parks and Streets and concerning the softball field. It was brought to my attention, and I was not aware of this, that the city does not own the softball fields. We actually lease the softball fields from city schools. So Jamie was able to identify an old lease agreement, well, the current lease agreement that has already expired. And so right now, I did meet with the superintendent and they are looking at the lease agreement. Once their lawyer looks at it and once their board approves the lease agreement, then it will come to, to the commission. So at this time, I have copies of the draft that they have, so I'm gonna just pass that out to the commission. And so hopefully, in August, I will bring the lease agreement to the commission and I will, yeah. So at this time, I stand for any questions that you may have concerning the softball.
Sorry.
Uncle Martinez, you are just referring to the Low Street, one of the north of, right? That, that is correct. Did you say Parks? I'm sorry, yes, I, that was one of the softball fields on Low Street, yes. So currently, the, the city schools, they own the softball fields on Low Street and we own the baseball fields and also the field's by the fields. But I wanted to give you the lease agreement, call your review, and then in August, hopefully, the school district will approve and then I'll bring it to the commission. When did the actual, the last one actually expire? By understanding, it was 2017, or it was 2017? At this time, I stand for any questions that the mayor and commission have. Thank you.
All right, Patrick's online, I'm not gonna ask him. I don't have anything specific to base, so we will move on. All right, we're now moving to the public comment section. Obviously, we have a lot of people here today, I don't know how many want to speak. I want you to have the ability to come forward and give your comments. I do ask that you try to hold it to three minutes. We're not strict on it, but let's try to keep it because I don't know how many are gonna be with all I can get out of here sometimes. We're not strict on it, but let's try to keep it because I don't know how many are going to be with all I can get out of the air sometime tonight. So everything that you say is important, we appreciate it. And just when you come up, please state your name and then address and we'll go from there. I hope you forward to that. I'll be shocked.
Justin Boon, that's the president of Levington Youth Sports Organization. So as Dr. Martinez handed you the contract for the renewal of the softball fields on Love. We hope that you've taken serious consideration to renewing it. We are doing our best, so I always put our best forward to help the city in maintaining the field. They've been paying the water and the electric, mowing the fields, taking out trash. And our organization has stepped up to attend to everything else on the facility. So we're hoping with our collective efforts that it's something that the city and local organizations and a few other people here that may speak to Levington momentarily that have, you know, a passion for seeing that that facility continue to be, you know, jointly sustained for the benefit of our community, all the children and all the good things that can come up with all of our efforts together, the signs. And if you have any questions, concerns, anything like that, please feel free to reach out to me or Dr. Martinez. Thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Diana. I'm Delaney, the head of.
I'm Sienna Portillo.
And we're just talking on behalf of the Levington softball field on Love. And we're, we all got the opportunity to coach this year with the girls. And we're just going to try to talk about our experience and why we would just work. Yeah, so we've all been playing softball since we were like four or five and we all grew up playing on those love fields. So like we often not let anybody use them anymore. It would kind of be rude to those little girls who won't have the opportunity like how we did. We're all going or planning on going to play softball in college on scholarship. And so we've used these fields throughout our youth to play.
So in practice also, I'm currently playing right now and these two are, the little girl, she's working on it. And by working on it, I can still take the time to go to softball field there, work on some stuff that I need help on or work on. And then even us, I think we all go out there. It's not the best, but we know, but we know we're getting work done and we're getting the job done. But by taking that away, you know, by other people and kids have to maybe go to Hobbs and stuff. I mean, we know we haven't had a little league here this past year and we got to coach the little kids and it was the best thing ever. We either broke the game down for us, we realized how much they really do like it. And by taking that away, we know girls probably going to have to go to Hobbs or somewhere else to play league or even try and do travel ball, which with us, we're blessed to have our parents. So it's in travel ball, we know that's expensive and we know it takes a lot of time and money. And we know some kids just can't afford that.
Then the girls also had a lot of fun, I mean, we have like a bunch of stores that they have.
It's amazing. It's so, they just love the game and it's good to see that from them. They're eager to come back. All, all 10 that I had this year, we're so excited for next year. And just for it to be over after being bombed for two years from COVID and pushing them back so far for, because I remember at 10, I was not that far along from where they're at now. And I feel like pushing them even more back by not having the field where they can play in their hometown. Because I feel like that really does, is playing somewhere you live and your family and your parents and everybody that really can't travel or can't afford to travel and waste all the gas and stuff. It's just, it would speed really, it would suck really bad just to see them not being here. I love those, those 10 kids that I had this year. I love them with all my heart and just to see them not be able to play this year really does make me.
Yeah, and it was just nice to see how much they've improved, like from whenever we had started to our very last game. And especially like learning from us, we got to like show them and like some of our experiences and they all really liked it. Yeah, and they don't even have to take the route that we're taking, but I mean, it's just.
And then. And just have league here just to get them prepped for the high school level that you'll be going in. Because I really do think that you, it's a, it's not just a sport. It's kind of like a grind you have to do most of your life to get to that high school level and that college level. And just to not have them there.
Just have fun too.
Yeah. To learn.
We thank you ladies for coming up and let me assure you, nowhere in there is this that we're going to not do this. It's funny because all this came about because we were trying to improve those fields. We're getting, hopefully getting some money. And I will give you a short background. About 40 years ago, there was about 12 to 15 of us that literally built those fields out of our own pocket and our own time. There was a gentleman here, there was a welder and he welded every weld that's out there, at least the, the beginning. And we did it because we had a love for softball and we wanted a place to play. And that was as adults and then it's grown or whatever. So please don't think that anything, we're going to try to improve it. We're going to try to move forward and this is just a formality that got lost over time. So thank you for coming up here and we appreciate that you.
Thank you for listening to us.
Yes, I'm Jamie Cobles, who I, who I am here. I'm here to talk about chickens. Recently got involved with some chickens and they're in my pits. You know, the law says no battle, but they're, I'm not nobody. They were taken, contained in a cage. I run it and it's a cage. They can't go out, they can't get into the neighbor's yard. I talked to my fellow neighbors about my rooster and they didn't have a complaint or bother and I spoke to them. I just pulled up a phone call and chat and they didn't have any complaints about it. But what I'm saying is they're, they're useful. I can go outside, pick up my rooster and enjoy it and it's my other chicken as well. You know, you cannot have chickens in city limits, which I did not know. When I went to go pay my bill on the house and taxes on the territory board, there was a sign saying that aquatics backyard chickens are. Me thinking that flight was for us, the people here in town, not knowing that it was. I did not know if this part of the city, the Brown area, they're going to do that. Reexhibition and stuff, but I didn't get to make it. But what I'm trying to say is, yeah, we don't have, we're not allowed chickens, but my chickens. And if my neighbors have a complaint about their noise, there is certain hollers that you can put on their throat to, you know, reduce the noise. Thank goodness I didn't have to do that though. Really deep, right, it's like, I have a dog, kicking up all the time as well. But I didn't understand noise, that's why I didn't ask my neighbors about it. They didn't have any complaints and I was hoping if you do, let me know, I'll take care of it. I'll try to do something about it. My mom, she goes out there and watches them, feeds them, whatnot, therapeutic, like I said, hopeful, it was not just me. And if people do go online to order chickens, it's normally pure chickens and maybe a free, and then freebies will be your rooster. So if we can get like an ordinance of like 13, it's even if you do shop local. I asked for poles, which is females, and I got some roosters which I did not want. And since they're close to my heart, I don't want to be like, hey, you gave me your boy, I want that, give me my money back or something. You know, that's after a while, the rent is in my low. And I'm just here to see if I can change y'all's mind, if y'all can change y'all's, the ordinance and whatnot because it made me sad. My mom, me, it's just us, the little chickens. There's like a way you change y'all's mind, you can call me, I can help y'all with different things, like if you do have a rooster, get your surrounding neighbors, singe issue, saying that it's fine with them or, or some type of way or something. Because I do want my chickens back. I don't know if you can hear my throats, I swear, I miss the animals. I'm just here to say, yep, please, please, people about it. There's a lot of chickens all over the, the city that I see and there are loose, running loose on 17th Street, but they're by. There's chickens running right there, which is not my problem or none of mine to do that. So I'm just saying, hey, maybe, hey, this, this is what's going down. You can do it like this or not, you get a bite or whatnot. You know, my chickens were contained, not running inside, made sure it's nothing like that. So I'm just here to say, hey, please think about it, not just for me, but also for my mom. And then they had said that a livestock, I'm not going to eat my chickens. So I'm just saying, please can take that into consideration.
My name is Patrick Cobles and I love Levington. And people tell me, why don't you do a louder, we don't, no, this is my, I love it. And my concern is about chickens. Even my, my doctor home told me that, go outside and pet, enjoy the trees, enjoy your pet, enjoy your pets, enjoy your cat. There's no reason for you to be depressed. And I mean, not that this happened, it hurts me, but I feel good. I do whatever it's going to, we have to do, but I really appreciate if y'all can help us and thank you and may God bless you.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
And just a couple of safety and I will mention you guys, I think the city of Levington, I believe, but went out. One, one of the cars that I found, and that's probably what it is, but on the, in the alleyway behind 119, North Bank, there's a water meter and there's a corkscrew pipe that's about so big and the lead, the water meter lead about this big. Anyway, anybody that's walking behind in the alley, because they usually step in that hole and break the leg. So you can get, like you're getting into that. So what street was that, from the street? It's in the alleyway behind 119 North Bank.
Okay. It's the Casey, and you know, there's some bit that.
That's right.
For the lead to sit on and they hit that.
There is a traffic here too, those people's customers walk right by there.
The first thing I noticed is the, the railroad tracks, they, on a highway, then you can't really control that. I know the ones that come from Hobbs into the city, man, if you hit that the wrong place, you almost got to lose the tire. There's a couple more ones that you go back to industrial. If you don't follow them, it's too much now. To me, the thing about the railroad, it's very fast, put things back, back there for, I don't know, do that. Couple hours and bring you good things, thank you very much.
You got to kind of hurry up and get some calls. I'm the doctor, my name is Sam Corral, I'm a Levington resident. I'm here to talk about the Levington softball complex, lease renewal. First, I'm going to start off by everything that was talked about inside the roof and guide, everything involved around the children, whether it be that sorrow and the children, we keep these talks from the fires in the area, the shop locally, to eat locally, all the roles on the children. But what you said, Mr. Roberts, that there was nothing in the future that was going to kind of eat her, moving within that. Just kind of open, you know, as insurance that those girls that were up here, one was my daughter, all of all the others from the rap, just going to college. My daughter, because they talked to two college students right now, the spark that started that, we all started back there with that field. You know, just kind of renew that lease, hopefully we can, you know, if anybody's in disagreement, they may just don't know why. Get this beneficial, keep it going. Again, it's, it's for the girls, they start somewhere, do training, obviously at home, but they're, they're young girls that can get together over there. No need to softball parts of playing football, soccer. I mean, just keeping views, you know, I played out there, whether it's even doll league to soccer back when I was younger. Everyone's probably doing that from Levington, played out there. Or even walked out there to go see people. But, you know, I can't really follow up too much behind those girls, you know, they're talking, but just reconsidering things on the negative side. I'm making things with it, I mean, if it is, I, I ask us to continue to go with it.
Good evening. My name is Mariana Tafayan. I want to hear about the softball complex in hopes that you guys are doing at least. Just especially based on all the ladies, I also coached at the high school as well. Growing up, that was kind of my outlet. Let's face it, here in Levington, there's not a lot of much things to do for these children. And these girls have stepped up this year with Ms. Taylor, to be able to provide something for these ladies to do. Growing up here was tough for me as far as family home, but playing softball was my outlet. I also played some college ball, but it also taught me a lot of life lessons, which is very important with these kids here, especially with the world today. With these ladies coming forward and helping and seeing the spark in these kids to be able to, to say, you know what, I can do that too. And being able to also give these fields to, to where they're in great condition. Because at some point with having U triple S A with Taylor, with Mrs. Taylor doing that league, we're able to bring tournaments to town. That also helps the community with people coming in and shopping, getting these restaurants money and getting the hotels money. It's not just about the children, but it's also about the community and having these softball fields. Big and being able to play with not only our local teams, but having other teams come down and to help us bring our financial situation as far as our community up. I think it'll be a great idea to renew the lease because it just helps everybody all around. I really hope that you guys consider that. We, a lot of the girls are, we're saddened when we're hearing about the situation and that's why we were here today. Because we, we believe in, in our kids to be able to, to continue to play and to be able to have something. Not all kids are, you know, athletic, but when they find something that they love and they, they know that they're good. They tend to flourish and know that, you know what, I can do that. And these girls are great examples of that. They're going out to college, they started there, I played there, I bled, sweat and cried on those fields. And, and just to, to see them decay over years, it's, it's saddening to me. But knowing that Ms. Taylor stepped up and we're stepping up as a community as, as women to get this field going, I think is a good thing. And I'm hoping that you guys really, really consider renewing because it'll benefit us all. Thank you.
Not an official one.
And I'm here as well to support the softball girls. My story is, I coached my daughter. I've been coaching her since the past 40 years. She loves it. She obviously cared about what's going on. But what I want to bring to the table today is, as a coach, I want to tell you how, any facts, these girls. There's different characters, there's different behaviors. There's different characters, there's different, um, behaviors, backgrounds, from these girls. Matter of fact, I had a couple of girls from my team this year telling me that how important it was for them to play. One of them, she was adopted, her parents didn't care, they chose one game, but her going to the field, and being with the rest of the girls, that was her bound. And to me, it just, you know, it brings chills, I mean, you know, we have our children, look after them, you know? But to hear from other girls, where they're, and that has been a saving for them. It means a lot. So when, you know, we heard about what's going on with the complex, we can, you know, give us support. This is making a difference on these girls. You know, we thank Edith for stepping up, us as parents, we try to go out there, cover holes, face whatever we can, nobody's paying us, it's our time, but we're doing it for the kids, and it's all about kids. You know, so, and the reason I'm just here is just, you know, just to let y'all know what difference it makes for the girls. And, uh, hopefully, we're able to work on, in ways, and keep going. I mean, it's, I don't know if y'all been out there while we're playing, but the vibe is just, you know, live, live, so, I'm just here for the support of softball girls. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Good afternoon, City Commissioner, uh, Mayor, I will be presenting on behalf of Jose Corral. Um, he is here again, also speaking on the chicken ordinance, and how he currently has five chickens and one rooster at his home. Um, he did receive a warning, and so he has moved on, he is asking however, though, that the city commission please look at the ordinance, and do some modifications, or at least try to work with the community members. They try really hard to make sure that their area will be cleaned and upped in front and backyard, they don't see them just as, uh, chickens, they are household pets for them. It is something also, again, similar to what Ms. Pat said earlier, that is something that they like to do, to be able to go out into their backyard, to be able to, um, just enjoy some other outdoor time, is being able to care for those chickens and providing some another out, and that allows them to be able to, uh, just be healthier and stay active. They give them time.
They could add a good discussion I want next.
Well, I don't necessarily, we need to edit, um, are you gonna be updating the list, or something?
I've not been told otherwise, but yes.
Awesome.
If that's a good discussion, that's.
Do you want me to give you guys the process? You all understand the process of them, and you support them?
Right. Give me the discussion. Sorry.
That's okay. Eden Taylor, um, the Vice President of the Levington Youth Softball Organization. I have one girl that could be here in the league, Sharia, so I'm gonna kind of read, and then I'll finish with what I had. She was also one of the high school girls that coached out there with us on the tenure side, and, um, she, and I'm not gonna read everything, because it was great during you, Mr. Roberts, talking about that there, there wasn't any going away with the contract, that you were still looking into continuing that contract. And so she, what she talks about is how the experience with those tenured girls, and how her team, many of the girls would come to the high school, field and watch their games, and then she even had a couple when they went to state, and it's been ten years since our girls went to state. And, um, they were up in Albuquerque, she talked to mom and going and watching the girls at state. So these girls, I mean, and it's not just because they were high school girls, they still look up to all of the coaches that we have. And when I heard, well, let me go ahead and finish what she's saying. And so she was saying that, um, the field, she also started there when she was little and played, and, um, you know, she had the opportunity to go play travel ball, and so she did. And, um, without having those fields, the first ten years, her, well, she played, she started at tenure playing, so, from T-ball up to Harbin Ten, she played out there, and, um, she, what she talks about is how the girls felt and controlled playing the game on the field, how they felt the power, they started out scared, but they left smiles on their faces. And these girls felt successful, they felt like we felt, they felt like they would start at something new. How the high school has worked hard with softball, and, um, she said, high school softball was always hard, being pushed behind the baseball boys and all the other sports, and we worked hard to get where we were, and ended up going to state. And that's why we want to start that mindset now, in the kids that they coached this year. And I thought, how awesome is that, for these high school kids to be willing to give up their summer? Because we started before school was out, and practicing, even when they were still practicing, they came out and practiced with the girls. And then they went to state, came back, and then coached these girls. And so that's just, uh, you know, obviously, temperament of coaching the girls, and, you know, they love it. And so, when I heard that three of the commissioners were voting against not renewing this contract, called reinforcements. And I was on vacation, and got back last night, and so I spent much of today calling and visiting and, and, and trying to get support of what else sports mean. And yes, I know a lot of the, um, y'all talk about understaffed, but really, all we're asking is to, like Justin said, continue with the lights, continue with the water and mowing, and we pretty much is doing the rest. Uh, we're not asking the city to give us money to go out, other than that, to go out and fix those fields. Um, right now, they have cleechy, and if you ever slid on cleechy, and you seen a girl's leg, um, you know, it's hard, and it hurts. And we had some of that, and it's, it's not safe for them. And so we are looking at funding, not from the city, we are looking elsewhere. That's why when we asked Maddox for that, we didn't, I didn't figure it would come so soon. Um, and they worked hard on getting that fast, so that we can get those lights and dirt, so that's free money. And we're also trying to get money to fix the fields, so that it is that fine clay dirt, that when you go to Hobbs, on the fields that they have, not the Turk, but you go to Carlsbad, have you been to Carlsbad, fun place?
Been to high school, that's, that might be something.
Yeah. Are there, well, I think the baseball has more, I think the baseball has more of the clay than the, than the steel, and the stuff. Um, but we want our facilities to be far with them, and I don't know why we can't have those facilities up far. So we are willing, as an organization, to give that funding, so that we're not asking the city for thousands of dollars to do that. Um, so we're just asking you to do the upkeep, um, because not only, you know, and it's not about softball. Um, right now, we, um, we had a hundred and eighty girls that came out for softball, but you also have, this past week, soccer camp had a hundred and sixty, boys and girls, so we play soccer out on those fields. So not only are you at telling a hundred and eighty they can't play, you're telling a hundred and sixty they can't play soccer. And yes, there are other places that we can go, but why would we let a facility that is in perfect shape, that y'all redid the bathrooms again, that we kept clean, to let a set for more vandalism to go in there and happen? And then we're back to starting at zero. Football had a hundred and seventy-six campers. We play football out there, we're fixing to start playing football, we can't do that, we gotta renew that contract.
Ms. Taylor? I have a question.
Yes.
And, uh, it was reflected, I see, from Commissioner White. I have no knowledge, absolutely no knowledge, where any of this was put in peril.
I don't know, I just thought, uh-
I want to reassure everyone, and I appreciate everyone coming, don't get me wrong. Uh, but the sheer fact that you felt like you needed to come, it is, it has not been discussed to the Commissioner of District Three at all, or Five. And I'm not gonna talk about any of the others, but I can, I can assure you that I have spoken in front of Hobbs and, and Levington over the years, especially to the, to the wider stacks of both, that if you don't have events for kids, then you are wasting your time, because if you get the kids, you get the parents, you get the grandparents, you get the aunts and uncles and everything else, the biggest thing you can do for a city, in lodging, and GRT, and all of the other things, is to have events for children. So I am blown away that you have-
That blesses my heart to hear you say that, and to say that this is not gonna be an issue, because we have had, I mean, I had to say, no, we can do it right now, but Denver City and Martinez call and say, we want to fit some tournaments on, we wanted them to play, and I said, we're not doing softball yet, we're gonna get the, the fields in shape, we'll do it in spring, and then we'll add to that. And so, so, thank you.
And until you personally brought it to light, that the city didn't own that softball field, that I worked, I mean, there was, like I said, and you were, you're a lot younger than I am, so-
No, I played on those.
I know you did.
I know, I played on those.
And, uh, we put all of that, we thought we were doing it in our city the whole time, and until literally, we don't know, we-
Well, I think at one time, the city did, but then the school purchased it, like years, years, and I don't know how hard that-
Obviously.
And I didn't realize 2017, so really, y'all have been maintaining those for five years and not even noticed, so, what's another ten, what's another twenty, what's another thirty?
And that's just part of, Dr. Martinez, and the great job he does, he wants to be so thorough and make sure we have everything in order.
Well, and me, too, that's the way I am, I am-
Several contracts that are like-
I mean, you, y'all have had me as teachers.
Yes.
So you know how, down the line, I'm, you know?
He's really trying to get all our books, and that's why I thanked him earlier, because these people are working like crazy, it is a busy bee in here, every day.
So again, blesses me, that this is not gonna be an issue, that it will be renewed, and then we can start getting bids and stuff.
But I appreciate your zeal, and I appreciate all of the ones that have come and spoke to, to express how important it is, and that's, that's what-
Well, a lot of work was done, Key Club started it, I didn't start it, the Key Club started it, I just took it when nobody else would step up and, and be the voice. And then I have all of these wonderful, wonderful people that's just kind of stepped up, that's helped, and so it hasn't been me by myself once I started it, so, thank you. Any questions?
I'd like to say, I appreciate everything you do, but also, I appreciate you doing your homework, I think a lot of people that come with that podium, go with their homework. And, uh, it upsets me, too, because they make accusations, uh, for instance, like you said, you heard three commissioners said they didn't want it back. To me, I haven't heard that from not one commissioner.
Yes.
And we have to thoroughly review contracts, this is-
Right, and I am getting that, yeah.
You know, so that, uh, that is one obstacle, but I, I assure you, I think our interest is with the children, it's always been with the children.
And I don't think anything in that contract was changed from what it was, from 2017.
No, not if we did it right now, I see the old contract.
Yeah, we just updated the dates, and we did talk with Ms. Q and Ms. Andy, um, when we gave them the contract, and they're for it. They're like, yes, we want to keep the city going, we want the kids involved, because not only what, or what we were doing there, we're building these programs for the high school, and that's our goal, and not everyone's gonna be a travel ball player, but they have that opportunity. And they get to let be with the sport until they can be eighth grade and trapped in the high school team. So they have from three years old, all the way up to eighth grade to play out there. And so that's a lot of years, for all the kids. So, thank you. Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, move the meeting along, yeah, do we agree that no more, we talked about chickens or softball? And if there's something different that we could move forward with that, that seems to be the general consensus, either chickens or softball? Absolutely. There's something different we'd like to address that.
You're not talking about chickens or softball?
I'm talking about cows now. All right, I'm changing the subject. I'm gonna do some handouts.
Thank you, Ms. Commissioner.
Evelyn, Executive Director for the EDC. Uh, I passed out a few items, one of them is the ordinances, uh, 495, or, as well as our lead of balances with our spreadsheets, and then also the ordinance on how, uh, city commission, you know, put, be and put on the agenda for the city commission. I'm coming to you on public comment, uh, kind of, got out of, um, we don't understand, we submitted all our paperwork to get on the agenda, we were told, um, by David, that we were not allowed to be on the agenda, due to the fact that it, you know, our item, they were gonna work on the budget prior to discussing this item. Uh, our president and our vice president reached out to the two commissioners to ask for some reason why we were not notified, and we actually didn't find out until a few days later, a week later, actually, uh, when the agenda came out, that we were put on the agenda, and would not be notified as of the reasons on why. Uh, we didn't get received any response, um, couple, like I said, a couple inquiries were made to the city commissioners, as I'm aware, some of the commissioners didn't even know what was going on. So, um, we want it to, we just wanted to know, we, we're trying to be team players with City of Levington, what we're trying to do is, we have several projects that we have in the pipeline, and we don't know what to do, like, we're really on standstill right now, uh, we don't even know if we're even able to incentivize at this point in time. I know we've been kind of discussing the lead up balances and ordinances, um, as we made it aware, just, you know, it's very, very important for you to read ordinance 495. I mean, it's really basic, very, uh, straightforward on what to do, then don't, we are the guardians of that account, that's the only reason why we kind of created public comment time, just so that can be put down on the minutes, just to kind of protect ourselves, I mean, we are trying to be fully transparent when it comes to this account, and when it comes down to projects as well. Uh, but we've been discussing it since January, and we haven't been able to get an answer whatsoever on anything, and our projects are literally waiting on us. Um, we have a lot of good projects, projects that are seeing a benefit of City of Levington in many, many, many ways, and at this point, we don't know what to do. And, uh, if you notice on your accounts, it is a date, and the balances are up to date as of July fifteenth, of 2022. Um, and it does reflect a 1.285 million dollar budget, I mean, that's where our balance is at. We just were waiting on the city to validate that for us, for, till we are able to move forward and be able to incentivize these projects that are waiting on us. Um, I don't know why, I don't know what the budget has really to do with the lead up one. And we are, wanted to make you aware, um, like I mentioned before, uh, we're trying to be team players, we're trying to move the city forward, I know that there's been a lot of turbulence and struggles, and we're here, we're, we're a lending partner when it comes to, of to help the city, it's just we wanted to be transparent, and we've also, formally, the letter that's in your packet office, formal request, to have the lead of money transferred to a separate account, if you notice the ordinance that's in your packet, it clearly states that that money's supposed to be delivered in- If you notice the ordinance that's in your packet, it clearly states that that money is supposed to be put into a separate account and not be lumped in with the general fund. And we're, again, we're coming again for accountability purposes. We are, we have been keeping track of the account since 2010. And feel very confident on our expenses and incomes that we can ensure. And we're just technically waiting and reformally requesting that we can have that money transferred into a separate account where you know and we are aware of how much money we have announced.
Would you read section four?
So if you notice on ordinance four ninety-five, you know, the special fund and audits, just so you guys, for your, for your information, all revenues dedicated or pledged for funding or financing an economic development project shall be deposited in a separate account. One for each separate project means the expenditure provided in the lead up and the state way, why economic development. The city shall provide an annual independent audit in accordance with the Audit Act of each special fund or account. I know that's not, we've never had an independent audit on just the lead up. So that's, I don't know if that's even an audit finding or not, but we've never, just, just an audit just on that account itself. I don't think we've ever had. We're just trying to be compliant. I mean, we want to be up to par with everything that we're doing. I mean, we're trying to change rules and regulations and everyone gets our, who likes us. I have my Vice President here. I also have my President here. If you guys have any questions regarding the, the information that I provided for you.
I have one. I mean, that is not a question. I think we need to have a work session that involves, involves all this talk. Because I had a conversation with Junior the other day. He enlightened me on a couple of things that, that have changed. And that wasn't for this board, it was at the city. And he enlightened me that that has changed and brought more revenue to the EDC, which that, that particular ordinance was for other means for this board to make a decision on. Where the state may change, they drew that into the EDC. And Junior let me know about it because I, that was one question I asked him.
And I. Just kind of, kind of going back to the conversation that I had with Commissioner Trivio. So Evelyn, so she, she's regulated by a board, right, locally? And we're guardianship of, of the lead up fund for Lovington. The lead up, the low guard funds and we keep up with the low guard balance. But we got to keep into consideration that she actually answers to the state. And she works with the State Economic Development Corporation, Mrs. Russell, her boss, Mr. Mark Rooker. And when our city is bypassed with projects because we are possibly not compliant, you're sitting on seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars that doesn't belong to us. There was asked to be sent back. They bypass us, right? So long roundabout way, we got one of those bypass mutual partnerships come back to us because of our chief's plan. And they made us aware of, we're being skipped over because we're sitting here in high tide all the time, maybe not knowing exactly where we're at. We're making public comments of budgets. We're making comments to them unsure of where our money is at and what we can contribute. So that money is, and I, I agree with you, Mayor Trivio. We need to sit down and have a work session again. It's been done in the past. There's new commissioners that may not know. There's old commissioners that may not know, but when the LEED Act was passed for the City of Lovington, it was for economic growth and infrastructure. And that money is only to be spent with our authorization. Recommendation and our authorization to move forward to the City Commission. City Commission can shoot it down any day of the week they want. But the recommendation and authorization comes from our board. And so if we need to reach out to New Mexico EDC to help put on this workshop to prep the commission, to prep the city management, to prep the new Treasury Department, that way there's an understanding. Guys, this is out of our control. This isn't us being a pest every two or three months just up here wanting to know where our money is at. We're being pushed. And we're being pushed from a lot of levels. And ultimately, it is affecting our community by potentially not being able to entertain potential businesses. And in the past, we've been asked, what does, what is the Economic Development Corporation? Well, we do a lot. Couple, couple of meetings ago, we talked about the hundred and seventy new homes that were brought into the City of Lovington that increased the population by three or four thousand, right? The EDC gave incentives to most of the contractors for city utilities, curb, gutters, asphalt, sewer lines, power lines, you know, everything that they needed for a contractor to take that away. Number one is we had to be able to provide citizens of Lovington with affordable housing. Like, you couldn't build a home, have all this infrastructure in place. And the home, the home would be on the market for more than it appraised, right? So without the help of the EDC, then new homes would have never been in Lovington, most of them, right? So there's one, there's one scenario. Another, another scenario is when McDonald's decided they wanted to rebuild, rebuild their McDonald's. You know, there was no money for infrastructure. And the EDC picked up the tab to reconnect their seventy-five thousand, upgrade their seventy-five thousand dollar water line. So there is a lot that's done by the EDC. Maybe it's unknown, right? It's not spoken of. A lot of it is based on that we, we are in this role with non-disclosure agreements, right? So we can't go to the press. We can't go to the commission, to the city management or the city mayor and talk about it. And a lot of it is confidentiality agreements that we go on and we make the recommendations for you guys. They, you guys pay and we move on. So whatever it is that we can do in our part to enlighten everybody on how this act works, trust me, we're willing to do it. We are, we feel like we're just beating a dead horse, right? It's just every other month, we're up here just wearing you guys out. I don't want to see you guys in public. Evelyn doesn't want to see you guys in public. Rosie doesn't want to see you guys in public. And you start dodging us because it's going to be a conversation of work. One, twenty-two million dollars, right? We want to get past this. We have to get past this for the betterment of this community. But no, without a doubt, it's not us pushing. We're getting pushed, right? And, and if we're going to get pushed and we're going to get passed, we have to leave or month after month by the state on the status of situations, then we have to go to you guys. So if there's any other questions or any concerns that we can address today, just let us know. You know, if there is an ordinance that stated that that money is to be kept in a separate account, right? It wasn't. It was an audit finding that five hundred thousand had been spent on payroll. So there is a lot of findings that, that are catching these scenarios. But how they're tripling down or up to the New Mexico EDC. However, that works, I don't know. That's out of our hands. But when we're asked to fix something, we're a great working group. We move forward all the time, strive forward. And every meeting to accomplish what we have cast. And this has just been sitting here for about the last year. And, you know, David was right. There's been changes at state level through Hospital five twenty-nine to five seventy-nine. Dear marking of funds. I stood in front of the commission in January and asked you guys to become familiar with HB five seventy-nine, the dear, the dear tagging of funds and, and the way it's being reported to you guys and the way it's allocated and distributed to the Treasury Department for the city. Our money is already separated and allocated. That should be the way it gets separated out into accounts. But, so they're separating that at the state level. It's coming to the city and then it's being put together again and being lumped into a general fund when it's being separated at a state level for a purpose. And that purpose is to get into another account. That way we have accountability for it. So if there's anything that we can do in the future, we will make ourselves available anytime, day, night, weekend, holiday. It is something that we really want to accomplish in the near, in the near future. And, and just merely for the fact of, I, I'm getting a heartburn if we find out they skipped us to go twenty miles south because, you know, we don't have our, our stuff together. I think everybody in this room will probably tell us that.
And he's correct. It has been. I found out, I was wondering, I'm like, I have all the qualifications for what this TRO, which is Potential Recruitment Opportunity. And I reached out and I'm like, how come I was bypassed? Well, you don't have your stuff in order. It'd be hard. You wouldn't even be able to incentivize this project. Plus, you don't have your finances in order. Us personally at EDC, we do, but the fact that we are not able to show that we have our finances in order is an issue for us right now.
And I'm glad you brought that up. So just to clarify, we, there is the low guard account, which all the lead up money from the state level goes to, right? We have our own operating account. So we operate by buying our paper, our pens, name Evelyn, administration fee if she has a summer help, summer intern. All of that is operated out of, out of Western Commerce Account that we have for the Lovington EDC. That has nothing to do with the city. That is a separate account, nonprofit account, five oh one.
C six.
C six account that we, we are responsible for. And the, the account in topic today is the donor account, the lead up account, where the, where the money is at for that. And, but again, we give you all a copy of the ordinance, highlighted it. And we move forward and we're here for however we need to.
We want to help you figure it out. I mean, if anybody knows anything about them, the council would be us, me, myself, I think, or since 2008. So I was from the process from the beginning all the way to now. I know that there has been change in administration within that. And I know some of your system from original when I had spoken to Tony, whether she can only go back to 2015. So that's one of the reasons why we have been keeping tabs, just for our records, had nothing to do with you, for our records only. But we want to help you. Like Junior said, I don't want to, when I come to City Hall to come get around, I don't want everybody to avoid me. I'm like, the lady, there's only one to answer questions for. But I mean, we're really here to help. We really want to help you understand what those costs and expenses and income that's come in since then, so you can understand.
Not thinking nobody wants to avoid me. They're just not understanding of what's taking place. That's all the work session. So why anybody's on the same.
Yes, and we need to reach out to New Mexico, Texas Rev. What we did in the past with Tony Kennedy, Martinez, reach out to them. That way they can break it down and show you how it's separated at a state level. And it's separated at a state level and then, you know, again, they're doing all the work for us. Before June fourth of 2019, we, the Treasury Department here was having to do work taking out our one sixteenth of economic, our one sixteenth of infrastructure, combining it as a one eight. So now it's all being done at a state level, real simple, easy, dispersed amount. And so whatever we can do, we can reach out to Mr. Monti, set up a workshop. That way it comes straight from the, as they say, horse's mouth, straight from the state. And we will keep the last work session that we had. We were not, we were simply, yeah, the state led the meeting, give Tony all the information.
I would love if you guys did that. I want to see. We have the contact information. All, you know, we, we have been looking at it. It's just there's, you know.
We understand.
I need, I would love for you all to come in and talk to me so we can figure this out. Actually, and that's our main intent, you know, is to help you and.
I can handle it at the end of this. I have to understand. I can come in at the end of the year and I can be at the end. So I, I would love for you guys to come in and, you know.
May I interrupt? May I interrupt? Yeah, you, I'm going to be real rude and apologize.
We, we.
We're in a public comment. They're way up past thirteen minutes. I'm all for a work session. We can hash this out and get this corrected and get it done. But I would like to move the meeting on forward, just because that's who I am. And, you know, I, I don't want to fix, I want to fix the situation. I do, I understand it. Understand the situation here, but.
No disrespect. That's the way we've been treated every time we come up here.
I understand, but we have an agenda of moving to a work session.
Okay.
And, and I'm concerned if you all want to do it this week, next week, whatever advertising is, as quickly as possible to move that forward. So we can adjust that. But as far as this evening's and the situation where it's a public comment, I mean, if I give you forty-five minutes. I, I understand, but, you know, I'm just, I'm at that point, right? So I apologize.
Hang on. All right. We are trying to move along, but I'm going to address some of those issues. I spoke with Patrick. He's not here tonight. I would have asked him to explain it tonight. Far in the agenda, it has been the practice of this board over the years. And he has twenty-one years of experience. So I took it upon his experience that it's stated that basically any citizen or anyone can ask, be put on the agenda. And that can be, as long as it's not offensive at its face value, okay? That typically occurs. And then when it comes, and when it gets to the commission, then the commissioners can move to adjust the agenda by either removal or whatever of that item. So that is an education time. We're going to take a moment to learn or whatever. And that if it, once it's requested to be on there, then it typically, in the past, has made it onto the agenda and was adjusted at that time. The second, I, I appreciate the workshop situation. I think that's going to be a great place to move forward with. And it'll also help if, and we're going to get there sooner or later. In the non-action items, there's going to be a discussion of concerns that are out there. Part of that is what we're going to be talking about and that's going to be the fund accounts and how to, and how long, when, we're going to try to have that done, even though we've talked about that before. My third issue is, and that is, you have stated that you're here to help. And we appreciate that. And of course, I'm, I have sat on this board a long time and now I sit on this board as in the mayor position. I, I, I know that there are, that there are projects out there. And one of the issues, and this is reaffirmed today, is the North Love Lift Station. It is impossible for the projects that the hospital has in their projected future. It is impossible for the apartments that have to be constructed to meet the deadline. Are they, are they able to lose, are generally lose that and revert back to the hospital, yeah, revert back to the hospital? It is, we, in his own statement today, are at a hundred percent plus capacity on that. So my question to you is, with this workshop, can we, as a city, ask, since you received funding for infrastructure for the city, would it be possible to maybe have you look at taking on that as a project? Or at least partner up the city on, on that? And you don't have to answer right now. I'm throwing it at you. But in this workshop.
Absolutely. And, you know, Mayor, that's, that's the reason that we're, it's kind of urgent for us to get a balance, right? We can't make the assumption or standing here in front of the public and say that we're willing to contribute in that account when we don't know what we have.
Okay.
We know, we know what our balance is on paper, but actual funds there, right? If there's not another account, it's not sitting there. We're not getting a big statement every month. When we get that, absolutely, we are, we've always been very, very good with the City of Lovington. We have access to state funding that is very, very important that we can. We have access to state funding that is very, very, um, important that we can use. So no, absolutely, we're, that, that is, that was my priority.
Okay, now, in, in to Commissioner Gandy's request, if you don't have anything, I don't have anything. We let, if we'll get to this item, hopefully some of your questions will, uh, be addressed and we can move on. So we appreciate it, um, and thank you for your comments.
Thank you, guys.
I hate that, see anyone else? But I want you to feel comfortable. If not, let's move on to non-action. Mon, I believe you're up.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioner. Um, a, a little word, super quick promise. Um, just a reminder, our matching brands are open for property owners. That closes on August twelfth, it is available online at lovingtonmainstreet.org. Available at Lovington Chamber, available at City Hall, is also available with us. You will need to get one estimate included in that allocation. We have money to get out, please, 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 we have a lot of properties in the downtown that are definitely invited and need some assistance. Please go out there and apply for that funding, it is available for our downtown businesses. Uh, and with that, I'm going to transfer over to our hopefully nice positive update. Uh, what we would like to speak today about is the capital outlay for New Mexico Main Street, just like E D C, Lovington Main Street. Also have access to a special pocket of money that is called capital outlay. Um, this capital outlay is only available to New Mexico Main Street accredited organizations and pre-approved projects. Um, because of our check record, we have been selected by New Mexico Main Street for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, and we would like to work with the city of Lovington on this project. This is particularly going to include sidewalks. We are going to ask for funding for lighting as well as benches and some minor, um, infrastructure things. I wanted to point out, this will be on Avenue A, this is literally right behind us. Uh, that is the area where the Lovington Public Libraries. And then the other area is going to be central, um, over by, um, West Central, which is over there by the Mickey Mall. And that area, uh, our goal with this project is to update completely and completely renovate the sidewalks. Um, I will stand for questions. Again, this is just the award time, so we're gonna request the funds. We have been pre-selected, so long as the application is submitted, we will be get to go on that. Uh, does anyone have questions, comments, or concerns?
You said the deadline for applications?
This Friday.
This Friday.
Yes, I got it, don't worry, we're good.
No, your other one is different, the downtown one was different.
Oh, downtown is August twelfth, sorry about that, August twelfth, yes.
Mon, are you getting the matching funds that the city has to provide for that three hundred and fifty thousand?
Yes, and I have spoken with Mayor Roberts as well as city manager, Dr. Martinez. And that is going to be one hundred thousand dollars that they are requesting as a match. Uh, again, though, in exchange for that hundred K, they're going to give you guys three hundred and fifty thousand. And this will be for sidewalk in- infrastructure improvement only.
And that will be, that is not money coming from the city general fund, is money coming from the county? They have asked to, uh, help, uh, different projects that will assist the city of Lovington. So it's not, uh, the city is not going to be encompassing that.
And one of the things also that was brought up during our discussion was making sure that we have a, a preliminary maintenance plan in place for these things. Um, because we are asking for twinkle lights, um, on the library end. Uh, and so we do want to make sure that we're accounting for that. We will not have any irrigation projects in this. Uh, our biggest and main focus is gonna be on sidewalks, whatever leftover funding we have after the sidewalks on both of those streets have been replaced. We'll go towards lighting and electrical, and then finally will be used for benches or bike, uh, bike racks.
Right, um, Mayor Commissioners, I was just gonna take on the edge course that, um, city employees will be taking. Um, just to introduce the edge course, it's through New Mexico State University. And it started with their program of extension services, and it started out at County College, but then they extended it to, um, local state, even tribal governments. And then just a way for, um, these staff administrators and city managers to see courses to better enhance their, um, public knowledge when it comes to serving community and everything. Um, they do provide a seasonal, it's called homing your in an edge course throughout the year. Their, um, next one will be in September, however, whenever, um, Dr. Martinez reached out to us, Dr. Martinez was the one that knew about the program. Um, he reached out to them and we let them know what classes we would like for courses that we would like to take. But most of these courses require free web, we were, or was it, I can't say it, work. And so they said, uh, our employees didn't, um, qualify for them, because we haven't actually taken any of these courses. So they sent us over courses that they were recommending for us to take. Um, if the employees do complete these, hopefully maybe we can participate in some of the ones coming up in September. Um, but moving forward, we got the grant from Maddox, that three hundred thousand dollar grant, which twenty thousand will go to, um, employee training. And so these are the courses that they recommended us to take. Um, C P M one one one, Know Your Government, one thirty one, General H R Law. And then there's a A and B course for Ethics, Know the Law. And so these, these are the ones that they'll be offering, um, to us. These courses are either, um, in-person, they go-to-you instructor or online. Luckily, we are able, the grant, we're able to secure an instructor to come to us. Um, the tentative date that they will be coming, it's not come up. I had a, uh, Excel sheet, but they are supposed to be coming August, um, twenty fourth. Um, August twenty third and the twenty fourth, and, um, they will be three hour long courses. We have about twenty six employees interested, um, right now, and it's open to all employees. Um, so for those courses, I guess, it's, if, after they send, after they receive their certificates there, they can go on to produce more courses. And we'll have that, um, hopefully leftover grant from Maddox to extend these courses. Um, and that is it on the in and edge programs, if you have any questions about it. We don't know what cost yet, we're still working on details with them, but our, our employees will be taking these and we're excited about this.
You say August twenty third and twenty fourth?
Yes.
How many employees?
Um, the most on one of the courses is twenty six. So on the Know Your Government, I had it up here, uh, twenty three employees, General H R, twenty six. And for the A and B, I think Know the Law, eighteen, I've signed up so far. But they still have time, because we haven't set an exact date on there.
It's gonna be different times during the day, or is it all gonna be at once?
But.
Twenty six people.
It's going to be in the same, and we have a, a max limit in here of fifty three, so. And they'll be in this room, this is our biggest room.
We'll move on to the next item. Discussion in part of terms, uh, I'll lead off and, uh, city manager and I are tagging this. Uh, this is the list that I provided in our last meeting. Uh, I want everyone to understand that this is a living document. Go meeting, the meeting is gonna be on our website, because it's part of the minutes. And it's gonna be, it is open to, uh, additions. And it is also going to track, uh, project or anything that's gonna be completed. Uh, and, and then we will continue to update it. Uh, it hopefully will give the, uh, citizens something to look at if they have a concern. I also want to, uh, tell all citizens that if you have a concern, you would like to see, uh, contact your commissioner so that they can have it added to the list, uh, either at the next meeting or in between meetings. So this is, this is accountability for this board to citizens of Lovington. There's also something that we can then ask our department heads and kind of keep up with that as we go along. So we're gonna hit this, uh, hopefully quickly, so we can all get out of here a decent hour. Uh, the wastewater department, since it's been kind of my focus, I'm gonna go ahead and take this one. Uh, I'll do a lot of my line item at a time, hopefully we'll get through this very quickly. Uh, the wastewater discharge permit, our wastewater discharge permit, uh, it basically concludes on August the tenth. And, uh, we had a, uh, meeting this morning with the New Mexico Environmental Department. And they asked, uh, you have to have an application in a hundred and twenty days prior to that. Obviously, since we haven't submitted it, we didn't meet that particular deadline for the submission. But they asked if we did it in, and I I put on here, August the first as a deadline, it's not really a deadline, that was just to try to get the, uh, application in. If we get it submitted before that deadline, then they are going to extend. He said it would probably take him at least six months to get to that for, uh, final approval. So he basically was telling us, keep working in the way we're doing and, uh, fill in all of the gaps and get, get the permit application complete by that time and then we'll move forward on it. Uh, and, uh, Dr. Martinez, if I missed anything, please stop me, add to anything, and I'll do the same when we get through it. Um, uh, the wastewater treatment facility, we've had non-compliance, uh, testing results. So we are verifying those, and then we will have to submit a credit, corrective action plan. Uh, we have enlisted, uh, Sonder Miller and Associates, uh, from Hobbs. And they are helping us in all of these particular areas, from the discharge permit to this. And basically, as we go through this, we don't have a level four operator on staff, and it's required that we do. So we had to also let the state know that we don't have one, we are, we have all of our associates, uh, moving in that direction. We hope to have one on staff as quickly as possible. But they are, the state is in, uh, is now aware of this, and so they're working with us, and they gave us some avenues to also reach out to that. Uh, and they, and yes, they know Leo is actively part of this team. And, um, basically, he led the meeting this morning also, so he has. So we're, Sonder Miller is just a partner that's really helping us get through all of this. Uh, in addition to that, our facility is rated for two point four million gallons a day, with a peak of two point seven. We're operating about one point two to one point three million gallons a day. We're probably gonna have our, uh, through all of this, they see we can't treat effectively, treat one point three billion. So they're gonna probably reduce our capacity and, uh, the plan, overall capacity, until we have this, and it's gonna take capital improvements. The, uh, the whole facility is on the, uh, I C I P list that we will be addressing here in just a little while. Uh, so we're, in all of these areas, we are making progress in each one of them. And, um, we will have plans on everything as quickly as we can put it together. Uh, staffing and staff directives have already gone over, we are understaffed. If you know somebody that would like to work for the city, we have plenty of places available. And that's what all of this is on there, to make sure that people understand that there are jobs available. And we are having trouble filling those positions. So, uh, I'll head on there, the nuisance odor from the facility. If you haven't been around, uh, Chaparral lately, or you don't live right behind it, or whatever, uh, several years ago, in the early two thousands. We all remember when we were around it. You remember that we had similar situation. All of this is also will correct that. So as far as the wastewater treatment facility, that is not a comprehensive list. That is a list that I am aware of, and we will be working through this. The collection system, as you certainly stated earlier, uh, the North Love Lift Station, which is the hospital, is totally reliant on. We know there are concerns if we are at and above capacity. We are, we have got to do, uh, some improvements on that, and we, we are currently working on that, uh, in addition to the plan itself. Uh, collection system, pre-treatment, what we can do there is go upstream. We add things that will help break down our wastewater, so that if it comes through our whole system and arrives at this plant, we've already done pre-treatment so that we can better, better our treatment of our wastewater, uh, in addition to what we do out there. So that's it on my part, that I had on there, there are other ones I am certainly hoping to adding to at this point. Or if there's no additions, then, uh, we'll just have that as an ongoing. Uh, Dr. Martinez, do you have anything that I missed? Mr. White, you were there, is there anything that I missed that we need to bring to light?
Mr. Mayor members, Commissioner Don, not on the wastewater, I have a few comments on the water.
Okay.
I, I think one thing to add on wastewater pre-plan is that, uh, it's all new step. You know, the level four we had, did retire. I know the prior management was very, very weak, although we had managing facility, and it's led to this point. Uh, but I'm excited to hear that we got Saunders working with us and would put everything in order. It's like we stated a few months back, when we moved and trained everybody and move, continue to move in the positive directions that we're currently headed. That's all I got.
Okay, Sonder, Dr. Martinez, Dr. Martinez, part of the well, you're gonna have a lot more info on that.
Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, as you are aware, we have, uh, are consulted on the forty year water plant. You know, there's some data missing on that, that they need on that forty year water plant. So we also have additional consultants, we have, uh, just here, David and Justin Williams in the audience. And what they will be doing is they're going to assist us not only in training our staff, but if you look at this list, we have a couple things that we need to address. Operational efficiency of the wells, operational procedures, well cycling and usage, well capacity, code there, uh, dynamic water and so forth. So we will continue to meet with, uh, Mr. David and Justin Williams and the staff. Now, keep in mind, the Water Department right now, we have four, we have four employees. And we're actively recruiting two more, it looks like we have two more, so we have twelve, six in that department. As we move forward, we will continue to provide that information to the commission. This morning, myself, Mayor Roberts, Commissioner White, we did meet with Bernard to go over a, um, leak reporting and repair schedule. So what we have decided to do is, they will have a top five list of, of leaks and repairs. Once they complete those, then we'll add to that list. So as we move forward, we will continue to provide additional information to the commission. Any questions on the wa- Water Department, Mr. Mayor, do you want to add anything to that?
Just, uh, there are some other items on there, uh, the, uh, as we all know, a couple weeks ago, we, uh, we've had water towers during, especially during the Main Street, uh, construction and, uh, project, where we've had to divert water, uh, from one, basically feeding from different towers. Uh, we have seen that our, uh, control over that, sometimes we need water at the bulk, uh, water tower. And we end up over pumping either the one on Earlac or the one on F D D. So, uh, we're working on that. And then one of the biggest problems we have in the city is, in order to do, to fix a leak, or, and there's various other scenarios. Um, we have a lot of valves that are ancient and we can't, we don't have the ability to turn them off. Some of them, we don't even know where they are, they've been asphalted over. So all of that is part of this, it's, we're in discovery phase of some of it. And we're gonna continue and it's being an ongoing, uh, water system upgrade.
We're also running into problems with people not maintaining their part of the alley, their folks work on a leak. There's a big giant tree chopped up laying in the way, or a pile of gravel or dirt or whatever. So if you guys can do your part to keep your land clean, it'd be a lot faster. Thanks, sir.
The, uh, the other item that's in under the Water Department is the billing. the other item that's in, under the Water Department is the billing, uh, the billing for water, especially their industrial, commercial usage. Um, we've been able to identify that we don't particularly uh, bill our industrial users correctly, so uh, commercial, industrial and commercial users, we're working on that because if we don't do it correctly and we don't charge them for the water we're providing, then guess what, sooner or later, the citizens of Loveington have to make that because we cannot sell water, or we cannot have the Water Department that is, that is a, an encumbrance on the general fund. So, we're, we're working on that, uh, in addition, that would also include solid waste, uh, our waste management system. Uh, we are working on that, I know that's in our financial lien also. And with that, just no questions and I'll turn it over to the uh, city manager to move to the next department.
Mr. Mayor members of the commission, the next department would be the Financial Department and then the Street Department Cemetery. We did hear from the Police Department and the Fire Department and eventually we'll hear from the Animal Control Department. Um, let me just, on the Finance Department, I know Tracy and the, the rest of the staff have been working on uh, the budget. So once we're complete with the budget, then we will address the specific issues under finance. As for the Street Department, I did speak with Bernardo this morning and I would like for him to eventually present to the commission, I think he next commission, he will follow me to address the specific issues. And it will be the same for the, for the cemetery and also to give us updates on more aspects of this.
All right, bring this to the cemetery, let's talk about the cemetery. So there's been a lot of, uh, I, I feel that a lot of questions on the maintenance of the grass and what's going on at the cemetery. I know we don't, is it Oscar, is he here?
Yes.
Okay, I, I realize he's not here, but can you give us any enlightenment on? I understand, okay, this is hearsay, it's been spoken, that the well out at Briskhaven is non-operational. Uh, so, uh, if there's action, I guess we're gonna have to look at, I don't know, I, I don't know what non-operational actually means.
Mr. Mayor, commission, I did meet with Shannon on cemetery, so a couple of things. We do have uh, three personnel working at the cemetery. Now, they're responsible for both cemeteries, the main cemetery and then the other cemetery. So they're responsible for both cemeteries. In the past, the Streets Department, Bernardo was in charge of the second cemetery. But since now we have three staff members, full-time staff members, they're responsible for both cemeteries. Um, we will order a piece of equipment, what was it, was it Shannon?
A cabo tractor.
A cabo tractor.
And it has been ordered.
That has been ordered?
Yeah.
Yes, so we will order a piece of equipment.
Yeah.
And uh, Mr. Mayor, commission, you are correct. After having a discussion with Oscar, he indicated that the well at the second cemetery is not working right now. Uh, he did have a contracted well that I looked at it and it would cost the city approximately thirty-five thousand dollars to, to fix that. Well, I just.
Dr. Martinez, did he get a second opinion or just got one?
Uh, Mr. Members of the commission, not yet, he just, he did get one vote, but um, I agree, we're gonna have to look at alternatives. Go ahead, Shannon.
Yes, um, he, he did talk to uh, two other companies and I think it was WHB that that um, said we'd best quote on that and he felt like that was something that we could work with. Though we have, we just haven't moved forward, forward with that at this point.
What, that's simple enough, is it thirty-five?
Yeah, I think it was about that, WHB. But um, as far as the, not having water out there, but to my attention, well, what about the trees and shrubs that are out there? You know, how are we gonna keep them from dying off? And Oscar did come up with, he thought, well, we need to get it, if we had a tank, one of those big, like, water tanks that we could put, that he could put on a trailer just to be watering the plants out there. True, and he did find one, he located one that was not being used, I found one and I said, let's have it used. And he hadn't been last week, he started watering the shrubs and the trees out there. And in the meantime, I mean, as a step, we're checking now until the city can just make it on the water. I mean, my understanding is that well has to be, has to be drilled.
Last thing, would you?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
I mentioned the numbers, I've got it down to thirty-two thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars. It's, I'm working for the city, I'll have to cut it down some more, it's right down in the city, so. It's letting me make about ten percent there, but I'm willing to work for the city, you know, maybe breaking up a couple of payments.
Can you, give us another day, I mean, like, is it just, I mean, should we, please get that figured out? I don't know, I mean.
Just the problem is, I talked to the gentleman that's in charge of the cemetery. Uh, I told him that the problem is, it's pumping so much sand, there's no way, it's, it's producing more sand than you are. And that's the problem, that its system is breaking down. And by the time you upload a hundred tractors, half the base gone. And then you still haven't watered your grass. And then with the limited schedule that they got, you know, it may be very hard on them, so I thought, I would advise them to build a new well. Because the original well was built down to two hundred and twenty feet. And it was built back in early, in the nineties, late nineties. And I think it's always pretty small, so to start off at two hundred, I think the well is now sitting at about one two feet. Because the sand is just chasing out, it costs so much money that I mean, it would cost twenty-two B H. Pump it all down and put more gravel in, it'd almost save costs as a new well and that would, that would, you're better off drilling a new well with a different design because they got so much sand. But they were, they're pumping about sixty percent sand, forty percent water.
So what is the new proposal, like depth and, you know?
We're gonna take it down to red bit.
Okay.
Which is about two hundred feet, give or take, twenty. You move over a lot of feet, it may change a little bit, but you're basically no less than two hundred, rather than around the two hundred mark. And that's what it basically. I'm willing, like I said, I'm willing to help the city, so if they consider getting it done. Because I know the plants are gonna die and the trees, but you gotta have it, it's gotta be in the budget. That's what I'm saying, you know, if you would, if the city needed to be given ninety days to pay you, you wouldn't work for that. Give it a chance to raise capital and basically move that back because I can, it's another picture you can't read. So, something to consider, or I'm willing to consider it in the city.
Um, the last item, or the last department on that, the Animal Control. Uh, the county is partner, partnering with the city uh, on Spain, uh, spay and neuter program uh, to reduce the amount of feral animals that uh, countywide, but also here. If you don't know, the City of Hobbs has a facility that uh, was contaminated with distemper. So, they don't have any place for uh, a uh, Animal Control Center anymore. And we're probably getting a lot of animals from Hobbs because we're just the program county and the end of work, so. Uh, this is an ongoing program, I would ask that we ask the chicken uh, ordinance to be, go underneath the Animal Control Department. Uh, I would also ask that we add administration, the administration department and put our rubes under there, obviously it won't have a lot of input until we get our report from the investor. And then, uh, any other items that want to be added, please, any of the commissioners that have, give a J-lean, we'll be updating this as we go. Any questions before we move on? All right. I'm gonna, so I cannot, or a, a.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, we approve. I'd like to make a motion, I'd like to approve a resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero seven five. Police Department, that's a motion, second.
I have a motion, second, discussion.
Usually, okay, yes, Mr. Mayor, commissioners, this is just to move the fence and the previously approved fence project, which is state-funded. And is there still being compliance of the sidewalk with people who discuss? Crystal, we just had a family get Crystal on board because she was out for a while, so.
So, the one that shows the blue line, we're just moving it to the red line?
Uh, the red line is where the fence is going.
You want to enter the intersection view or anything like that?
No, sir, if you see the left side, uh, the Low Street side is where the vehicles would come in. So that segment or two would be waiting for the gates to open, they're not getting in key traffic and they would, they saw the.
I was actually concerned about the citizens struggling up and down, was that B Street or A Street? South side of the, where the car parks, that, that view right there, it goes to stop sign to see across Love Street.
Uh, well, there's a tree there anyway, which would keep trimmed, but yeah, they'd be able to see southbound traffic coming. It's good.
Any other discussion? If not, Shannon, no problem.
Commissioner Bowles?
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Commissioner White? Yes. Mr. Leo?
Yes.
Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
Hey, I'd like to make a motion for resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero seven six, approval point. Commissioner White, State Representative, I'd like to move uh, members for, uh, advocate to the senior center advisory board.
Motion, second, uh, any discussion? If not, Shannon?
Commissioner White? Again.
Yeah, you can't go for the, which is six. Yes.
Commissioner Gandy?
No.
Commissioner Leo?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowles?
Yes.
Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero seven seven, approval of public input survey for the plumbing to the water system.
Second. I have a motion, second, uh, for the approval of resolutions seventy-seven, any discussion?
And then you, I'm gonna move, I'm gonna take that. Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, this is a survey that um, our consultant gave us. And what we would like to do is add this to our, uh, bar bill that's set up to all the citizens. And it's, it's optional, if they would like to fill it out and return it back to City Hall. Hopefully, we'll, our goal is hopefully ten percent or more will return the survey. Once we get the survey, then we will give it to the consultant and they will, they will analyze the data and then submit the report to us. Um, there's three specific questions, question number one is the, we're basically asking the citizens to um, either strongly agree, agree, neutral, disagree, or strongly disagree. So there's just three specific questions. At this time, I stand for the questions that you may have with, with the survey. Again, if it's approved by the commission, we try to submit that, J-lean, when, next one?
Obviously.
And obviously, yes. So at this time, I stand for any questions on the survey, if approved, again, we will submit it to the citizens. Again, hopefully get ten percent or more returned to City Hall.
Questions?
Commissioner?
Okay, thank you, Dr. Martinez, Shannon?
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Commissioner White? Yes. Commissioner Trudy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowles?
Yes.
Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero seven eight, discussion of approval of city along with the ICIP infrastructure capital plan, capital outlay twenty twenty-two, says twenty twenty-three.
Second, I'm motioning a second. Any discussion? Martin?
Mr. Mayor members of the, oh. Oh, my, my, I lost them, we're good. This is, Mr. Mayor members of the commission, let me briefly go over the stuff that I handed out to you. You do have a packet, but I did add a section at the bottom, okay, so. Now, we are required to, the City of Loveington must come up with at a minimum of five projects, up to ten projects for capital outlay. And so what I did is I met with departments and I asked each department, what, what is, what is your, your need? What is it that you need in the department? And so we went through a series of meetings and we came up with a list. Now, this is not an exclusive list, if we need to add additional items to this, that's, that's fine. If we have the public that would like to add an item, that's fine. But whatever is added to this list, we must add it to what they call the ICIP, the Infrastructure Capital Plan. So what each department has done, for example, the Fire Chief and Police Chief, they met with J-lean and they entered the information into the system. So my recommendation to Mayor and to the commission is that we come up with our top five. The original plan was ten, but if we come up with a top five that we can submit to our uh, to the delegation, to our senators and representatives. And so let me briefly go over the list. The first one is Public Works Department. And this, this includes not only Bernardo, but it includes also wastewater, it includes um, Water Department, so they came up with a total of six hundred and forty thousand dollars and we're looking at five pieces of equipment. Backhoe, have the list here of, of the items they are requesting. Let me just mention a few, excavator, tractor mower, crane truck, um, maintainer, backhoe and so forth. So on this particular item, we would request from our delegation six hundred and forty thousand. If we do not get the six hundred and forty thousand, fine, but if we do get something, then we'll prioritize with the departments and decide, okay, well, a piece of equipment that we would purchase, okay?
Yeah, Dr. Martinez?
Yes, sir.
Sorry, this is my first ICIP. Are we allowed to uh, group pieces of equipment as, as a?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah. I mean, if whatever they approved, if they approved a hundred and fifty thousand, then you pick one, two or three items, whatever you can do and move forward.
Yes, that's correct.
The next one is. Just a cap on the mirrors. Question about is that prior to this, we never did that and then I had an opportunity to talk to Hubert, this is our last go-around. He says, David, why are you itemizing everything? You need to put it in bold, you know, as long as they don't exceed five hundred thousand, you're pretty much good to go. I mean, I see a six forty there, but he always says the magic numbers, your top five and as long as they're about five hundred below, yeah, you most likely, you know, but he, he asked to re, to group them, that's why this year we're grouping them because we failed to do that in the past and it, and it hasn't happened.
So Public Works Department, six hundred and forty thousand. The next is the Fire Department, I, I met with the Fire Chief and they are in the need of a wildland fire unit. Do you have an older wildland fire unit?
We have three, our newest one is twenty-one years old.
Okay.
And we use our grassroots probably more than any vehicle besides an airplane.
Right, so that amount would be three hundred thousand for a brand-new wildland fire unit. The next one is public safety facility upgrades, upgrades, and that's our, the fire, that's what we have, uh, Fire Police that building there, we need to renovate inside, our, our restroom, bathrooms, you name it, so we're looking at a total of public safety facility upgrades of three hundred and fifty thousand. That will be on the police and fire side. IT department, IT upgrades and improvements, this one here is not just for City Hall, but it's gonna be all departments. For example, we met with the Sewer Department this morning and the request is for server and additional computers. So we're looking at a total of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for, in general, IT upgrades for all uh, city facilities and city personnel. The next one is the Finance Department, based on our um, audit and this is something that we need, it's an asset management plan of a hundred thousand. Um, and that will, that will be all assets for the City of Loveington. To include, again, this morning meeting with Sewer Department, that we need to have a new asset management plan. So we're looking at a hundred thousand there. Animal services, truck cargo van, um, we have a hundred thousand, they do need a new uh, cargo uh, van for animals for, especially for dogs and cats. Animal services, truck cargo van, we have a hundred thousand. They do need a new cargo van for animals, or especially for dogs and cats. And then police department, patrol units, two hundred, two, two hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. So a total of almost, well, about two thousand dollars total requests. Okay? And let me just go through this and then we can have the discussion. Proposed reauthorization of funds. So we currently have two hundred thousand to plan design, construct, purchase, and install equipment in the firearm system here at City Hall. Now, we did go through the RFP process. We, we had it out there. No one submitted a request. So after meeting with the, with the park heads, it is our recommendation to reauthorize the two hundred thousand. Again, this will, this will be up to the Commission if you would like for us to continue with this project. But my recommendation is to reauthorize the two hundred thousand dollars for city vehicles. So that would be my recommendation. And then the next one is we do have the six hundred thousand to plan design, purchase, construct, equip the veterans memorial at Park in Lummington, D County. We did submit the RFP to Commission, was denied. My recommendation for that is to reauthorize the six hundred thousand dollars to our baseball. We are currently working with the southeastern Mexico art noah development district. And his name is Herbert Kitana. He's the executive director. And Ms. Dora Batista is our capital ally for you. She's our coordinator right now. For example, if you look at the projects that she's working on, police fencing, she was working with the police chief for fencing, that was seventy thousand. She does have the two hundred thousand for City Hall. Now, again, we either continue to remodel City Hall or, again, reauthorize the money for vehicles. Animal shelter, Laura's here. The language in that particular capital ally indicated to build a new shelter. And so what we wanted to do is change the language to not a new shelter, but to renovate the existing. So that's something I'm working with Laura and with America. If we're going to change the language, we will, we're going to have to go now and then. Or we can keep the current language and move forward with the project. Okay? And then there's the veterans memorial, the theater marquee. There's three hundred thousand dollars for the marquee. So what we plan to do is move forward with that and fix that marquee. Now, after speaking with Hubert Kitana, he's telling us that if we do not have the three hundred thousand dollars in our budget, we can submit a letter to DFA, a hardship letter, and DFA will make that direct payment. So we don't have to pay out of our budget, the three hundred thousand, three hundred thousand for the marquee. That'll, that'll come, that'll be a direct payment.
That's it, sir.
Out of DFA. So for any of these projects that we do, we can use DFA. Okay? So what I would like to do tonight, and I know this is an action item, is to come up with the top five list that we would submit to or for our delegation, senators and representatives. And again, I would like to address the two hundred thousand and the six hundred thousand. So at this time, I stand for the questions, Commission.
Go ahead.
Yeah, Dr. Martinez, can we go ahead and put that as discussed tonight, approach reauthorization of funds on our base meeting that we have a lengthy discussion on.
We can do that, sir. That's, that's the way, yes. Are you talking about all items?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's mine.
That's good, because I was going to ask, like, from this timeline, I think that's a good idea.
All right. So, um, for our next commission meeting, we'll have a discussion on the two hundred thousand and also the six hundred thousand for the veterans. Correct? Okay. So then the next item is the top five list. Any thoughts, suggestions, from the Mayor?
Dr. Martinez, why don't you, since you have been the person most involved in this, why don't you start out with making a recommendation of the top five?
I would like.
Here.
Yeah. I'll do it. I don't care. Commissioner Gandy, can I just make one comment? And the only, only comment I want to make is on the police and fire public safety facility upgrades. I think we, we need to look at a grant for that, because I think it's going to be more than three hundred and fifty thousand upgrades or we need to do a cross street, maybe one or two, half, half million dollars. I think three hundred and fifty thousand is going to be a little bit. I think what we, what we really need to do, we need to do it right. Uh, dorms, redoing the police station, I think we need to, we need to get everything, so just two and a half, we have to, we need to see that. I mean, that's my recommendation. I mean, that's.
Chiefs, I know we met. What are your thoughts? Because I know there was something you wanted to renovate restrooms. We're in a twenty-five year building at thirty-eight years. I mean, we really need ten, thirteen million dollars for a brand new public safety complex. I don't know how realistic that is. It's, it's how much do you want to fix the plumbing? Kitchen, the bathrooms are terrible. If, next, if Judge Campbell's court moves out of there, we want to renovate and expand by getting a little more space. We heard that the roof is so-so condition. It's, how much are we going to invest versus trying to get something brand new? How, how long are we going to live alone?
And on my side, we're having to use portable heater in winter to keep our trucks from freezing. And then our truck haul smells like diesel or gas or propane or whatever kind of portable heaters we're using. I mean, we've got to be able to upgrade and at least the, I, I've already got boats to set up, of course, to put the heater, air conditioners on those truck hauls and, I mean, ceiling tiles, like you said, plumbing, our plumbing is falling apart.
There's no technology upgrade on this list that I.
Just a.
Two hundred.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Yeah, that's why I think it is a grand.
Are we taking into consideration any infrastructure, like our water towers or? Thirteen bracing. Yeah. Which is starting.
We're not going to percheal thing we can get.
I know, we're doing a design. We, we are supposed to bring it outside.
Just subject appears five hundred thousand, that's pretty much what you get for the state of assistance. So top five, Commissioner Gandy?
Sure, police department, number one, Public Works Department, number two, fire department, number three, the three facilities for the fire police, and then shelter number five.
Because these girls are doing.
I get it.
Building and all that.
I get it.
On like IBMs from nineteen. It's, it's not.
Yeah, so I get it, but it's a choice. I mean, my choice.
Well, reauthorization of.
Yeah, and that's what I was, maybe we re, if we look at this right here, we take whatever we don't, then we can maybe move and reallocate some of that. So.
Commissioner. Mr. Mayor, Commission, just keep in mind, we, we have the southeastern Mexico, you know, development district on contract. So once we approve whatever money we receive from Centipede, they will coordinate with us to make, make it happen. For example, again, the fencing, seventy thousand for fencing. City Hall, if we decide to reauthorize it, we'll let them know they'll reauthorize it. If we decide not to reauthorize it, then they'll move forward again with the renovations for this facility. Animal shelter, I'll continue to meet with Laura. If she wants to move forward with the current language, then that's fine. If she wants to change the language, we can do that. And that'll happen on October four. And then veterans memorial, we're going to reauthorize it. They will definitely do that for us. Any other recommendations?
Do, do we need this list in a priority list? In other words, well, one through five, five in the.
As long as they're going to ask what are, what's Lummington's five, what are your five projects that you want us to, to, because our delegation, how many are in our delegation, Chief? We have two sen, how many representatives? Four. There's four. You have two, you have a group, two senators, Gay Turner and, uh, Jaguars. And Gay English, and then you have Randy Pettigrew and Larry Scott. Okay, so we would lobby our delegation for money for those five specific projects. And again, if one does not make the list, we always have the following year to add that to, to the list.
And all due respect to Commissioner Gandy's, uh, top five, I would, I would put IT as number five. Once you be in Public Works, one, the fire department, two, number three, police department, finance department, four, the IT department, number five. Because the animal service, so that read also, reauthorization of funds, maybe you can allocate the funding there and she can get her equipment. Uh, that's something we can manage there.
Sure. IT department is number five, I know what you're saying.
How many?
I know, but I mean, you eliminated animal service.
Number five is IT.
All right.
And that's because of the reauthorization proposal made, what's made.
Mr. Mayor, Members of the Commission, I know she, we're going to, we're going to leave six police cars pretty soon. Six brandy police cars. And I don't know if we can wait another year. So I was thinking, I know you have patrol units, which are in seventy-two thousand. I don't know what that, if we take that out, can we, the following year, add more police cars? I, I just, yes. And on the asset manager plan, maybe we can, maybe we can meet with DFA to see if there's additional grants out there for the asset management.
And create a more magic, maybe we can get them to.
So he needs to knock out police units. He'll get six, so.
Yeah.
You pretty much accept to review any kind of funding you have with penalties and all that, right? Okay, so you've got to do that.
Mr. Mayor, Members of the Commission, my recommendation would be Public Works Department, Fire Department, Public Safety Facility Upgrades, IT Department, and Animal Services.
Going back to this one one more time, uh, with Hubert, like I said, if a ticket item is less than five hundred, so if we put animal service with the police department, with units, that would put one package together there. That'd be a total of three seventy-two. You can add them to as one package, uh, as the top, one of the top five, instead of putting. I think that's what we failed in, in the past, is we.
And add finance.
One, we're doing one item, item to their.
And put finance and IT together.
I think that.
Because that kind of works together, finance and figures.
Yes, sir.
You didn't want to change the ICIP list, yeah?
Yeah, let this combine, let this combine. We can get, get all seven in if we combine animal service with police departments, one item, and then IT and. So we put that, that's three fifteen and the other three seventy-five. So there's our five, there's our five.
Yeah.
Effectively, this, that's one, two, three, four, combined five.
That's.
Okay, Commissioner Gandy, did you make a motion on yours?
No, I didn't make a suggestion.
Suggestion.
I made a suggestion.
Last, if you were going to have to act.
Right.
Okay. Pour it up very much.
Okay. I'd like to amend my motion to, with the top five ICIP items would be the one, Public Works Department, number two, Fire Department, number three, Police Department, number four, IT and Finance Department as a whole, and number five, Animal Services, Police Department as number five.
Okay. We have a motion and say, any further discussion? Okay, not Shannon.
Commissioner Trillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowles?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Laura.
Mayor, I'm quick motion for resolution twenty twenty-two, zero seventy-nine, adopting the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, dash twenty twenty-three operating budget.
Second. I'm motioning second. Miss Tracey.
Okay, we worked on this budget. We, um, we had a meeting with the county finance director, he gave some mechanics on how to prepare these reports for you guys. We also talked to the DFA, Michael. And we tried to break it down so you could kind of see our payroll is our biggest budget item. And then we tried to break it down by, um, phone code. Well, I, yeah, pardon. It's basically the interim budget that you both already approved. We were suggested by Michael to keep the same number of things. If there's any adjustments that need to be done, we'll do those at a later time. We have to go every three months to DFA report, and that's when we will be doing the, the adjustments.
This is due the thirty-first, which is effectively Friday.
We're ready to open.
Ready to.
So it's a good question.
We've seen it all before. Do we have any question? All right. Yes, do you have any question? Any further discussion? All right, Shannon?
Commissioner Bowles?
Yes.
Commissioner Trillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yeah. Mayor, I pay bills.
Gavin, motion second to approve the expenditures. Any discussion?
Turn to all the sprinklers.
We're hoping for questions, but basically there's nothing.
Nothing.
I look through.
How much more are we, uh, hoping for, starting to feel?
Dr. Martinez? We concluded services with Tim Kent?
Mr. Mayor, Members of the Commission, we still have him on contract for the next two months, but I know we, a payment was about five thousand on there.
Five thousand, it's five thousand seven forty-five.
Fifty-eight.
So we pay him based on the lady's call and so on.
Yeah.
But yeah, we still have him on two months.
So are we utilizing him or how does that work?
We don't.
Are we paying him or are we paying him for contract?
We're paying him as we call him. It's like a consultant. We call with questions or help with something and he, he helps us, you know, do what we need to do, excuse me. And then he bills us. By that, it's not. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
I was just wondering if you was on contract, that would be contacting him every day, utilizing him and helping us and word from him, so.
Yes, and he is.
As a consultant, I understand.
Yes, he's consulting.
Yes.
So, so I did have one question, and it's related to the convenience center. Okay. We, we hand it properly away, but we hand them also the electrical goods with that property. With that, that crossed my mind today.
Yeah.
Do you just have that, okay?
I don't know. I don't have any here.
Yes, I was going to check with it next month to see if it drops off. We pay waste management as one to one, during the big dumps, so we need to know when we need to stop that or how that's going to work.
As soon as that transitions, in my opinion, that should have been.
They should.
Yeah.
Operating.
Okay, so we may have our waste management.
Yeah. Yeah, so, yeah, I was just, I was curious about the electrical part. I didn't see a, a line item for that facility, so it just got across my mind. So something about, I want to check.
It is there. It is, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
That is, that's not. Next one, probably just to recap on where we stand.
Yeah, on the. Okay. All right. Any further discussion, there's questions? If not, Shannon.
Commissioner Boy? Yes. Commissioner Bowles?
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Commissioner Trillo?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And ladies and gentlemen, that is, in the exhaust, we are adjourned.